Thank you, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We had a computer difficulty. City of Salem, November -- notices hereby given that the City Council Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted the committee, the hall will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December 7th at 6:20 PM to establish the Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Finance Program, Lee Fort Terrace, and tax increment financing for Lee Fort Terrace. This meeting will be held in person in City Council chambers at 93 Washington Street, second floor via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Act of 2022. In-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, and the public may also participate, listen, and/or view the meeting while in progress via the remote participation platform Zoom through one of the following ways. Please click the link below, which is on the website, and use the password 144975, or telephone and use in US 888-475-4499, which is a toll-free number. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, the matter is not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website an audio or video recording, pre-escape script, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for the effective communication of such sign-in language interpreter for assistance, listening device, or print material in digital format, and/or reasonable modifications to program, services, policies, activities, may connect to the City of Salem's -- may contact the City of Salem's ADA coordinator at 978-619-5630 as soon as possible, and no less than two business days before the meeting is prior to the progress or event. On the agenda tonight, we have two matters, the Urban Center Housing Tax Increment Finance Program for Lee Fort Terrace, and the Tax Increment Financing for Lee Fort Terrace. City of Salem, the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted the committee, the hall met to hold a public hearing in the council chambers on December 7th, 2022, at 6:20 PM. The purpose of discussing the matters listed below, notices meeting was posted on November 22nd, 2022, at 9:02 AM, and the notice of this public hearing was advertised in the Salem and Nevin News on November 23rd, 2022, and November 30th, 2022. Members of the committee, we have Councillor Merkel, Councillor Watsonfeldt, myself, and Councillor McLean, and Councillor Hapworth. Councillor Hapworth is joining us via Zoom, so any matters requiring a vote will require a roll call vote, because Councillor Hapworth is joining us remotely. With us this evening, we also have Tom Daniels, the Finance Director, we have Amanda Chian -- I'm fine, it's all my -- I'm thinking about tomorrow already. We have Tom Daniels, the Planning Director, and we have Amanda Chian Cola with us. We also have members of the Lee Fort Terrace, I see Courtney Coslow and her staff, as well as we have Kathy Hoag from the Salem Housing Authority. And who else?
And Steve.
Oh, that's right. Where's Steve? Oh, there he is. And we have the city assessor as well with us tonight. With that, seeing no objection from members of the committee, we'll open it up to Amanda for her presentation and overview of why we are here tonight to consider both the number matters, 656, which is the tax increment financing, as well as the -- I'm glad we changed the area from zone to area, because there was much confusion when we used the word "zone." People were thinking we were rezoning property, which we are not. It's identifying an area around the property in question, so I'm happy to say that we used -- we're now using "area" as opposed to "zone," because that was confusing to people. But with that, I will turn it over to Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide a summary of the Urban Center for Housing Tax Increment Financing Plan and area, and I know that is a mouthful, and that's why we refer to it as the UCH TIF throughout the presentation. This provides an overview of the discussion, the summary I'm going to provide tonight. I'll go through what a UCH TIF is, what is tax increment financing, why is this UCH TIF proposed, the qualifying criteria for a UCH TIF area, the proposed UCH TIF area, the eligibility for the program, and then the terms of the TIF agreement that is in the council's package. And then there were some terms that are revised that were introduced tonight, and so I'll go through those as well, and then questions and discussion. And I just ask if it's okay with Chair McCarthy to hold questions until the end, because I think some of them will be answered as I go through. So to start, again, the UCH TIF stands for the Urban Center for Housing Tax Increment Financing Program. This is authorized by state, the state. It enables the city council to approve a real estate exemption on all or part of the increased value of development. So that's, we refer to as the increment. And so basically, it's a vehicle to allow for a tax increment finance agreement. And it requires an area be designated for where those tax increment finance agreements can take place. So what is this tax increment financing agreement that I'm referring to? The tax increment finance agreement provides an exemption on new value resulting from improvements. The current value is not exempt. This chart shows an example of the concept. You see that blue bar going across the bottom? That's the existing value. This project, Lee Fort Terrace, is unique, because right now, there are no taxes paid. So this is looking at post-sale from the housing authority to B.C. Lee Fort Terrace. Then there will be a value. It's estimated at 40 -- well, I'll go through the actual agreement towards the end. But as you can see in this chart, that green box is showing the new value, and that's what the increment, or the percent of the exemption would be on. So the orange is what is taxed, or what they would be paying, and gray is the percent of added value that would be exempt. But again, that blue bar across the bottom is retained for the term. And these tax increments are really important tools, because they encourage investment and reduce costs and risk for the developer. And then at the end of the term, the city retains the full revenue, the full tax amount, and those terms are negotiated with the city. So why is the UCH TIF proposed? The propose, again, it's proposed to enable the tax increment finance agreement. The Lee Fort Terrace project is 100% affordable, and the rents just don't cover the cost to develop and operate the project. And so when you have affordable housing with this much affordability, it requires subsidies. You know, the big subsidy that you usually hear about are low-income housing tax credits. This is just another subsidy, but it actually helps leverage those larger ones. It makes the process more competitive when the developer goes to apply for those bigger chunks with the low-income housing tax credits. And I just wanted to give you a little flavor of what the application round looks like with the DHD right now. So we have heard from DHD, or from folks who work with DHD, that they have over 110 applications for the winter round in low-income housing tax credits. So to put that into context, DHD usually receives 70 to 80 applications. So it's more demand than they've ever seen. The total funding requests for those 110-plus applications is over $65 million. That's more than $40 million than they usually see. So incredibly competitive process for those low-income housing tax credits. So this local subsidy would help the competitiveness of the Lee Fort Terrace project, and then it also helps Beacon increase their permanent debt by having this additional subsidy. So this is similar to Housing Development Incentive Program, Tax Increment Exemption. And we looked at that, but the H-DIP program, we wouldn't be able to use it for Lee Fort, because it caps affordability. It requires at least 80% of the units be market rate development, but Lee Fort Terrace is 100% affordable with no market rate units, and so it wouldn't be eligible for H-DIP. And then you may recognize those squares on the right. Those are housing strategies from our roadmap that was recently adopted by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And one of those strategies is municipal subsidy. And that is proposed, or it's a recommended strategy, when a project on its own needs that additional funding gap. And the UCH TIF program is a specific strategy that was identified in the housing So this just goes through what the qualifying criteria is for a UCH TIF program. The plan has to meet two things. First, it has to be within a commercial center, and I'm going to talk more about what that means and what that is on the next slide. It also has to meet at least one of three conditions that are outlined in the statute, and those are listed on this slide as A, B, and C, but I bolded the item that the Lee Fort Terrace, or that the Salem Nat. UCH TIF meets, and that's that an average household income in the area is below 115% of the area median income. And 115% of the area median income, in this case, is 160 -- I can't see that from there, sorry, $161,230. And the census tract, the median income is 66,000, so clearly meets that eligibility criteria. So this goes through the area, and as Chairman McCarthy had noted, it's nothing to do with zoning. It's a geographic area that has to be defined as part of the plan. And this just delineates parcels that could benefit from a TIF agreement. It is referred to by the state, again, as a zone, but nothing to do with zoning. It's shown in sort of bluish purple on the map. It contains an assortment of commercial businesses. There's educational services, daycare, housing uses, an energy provider. And we have, staff has reviewed this draft area with DHD, and we received feedback from DHD that it meets the definition of a primarily commercial district. So this goes through the eligibility for the program. And the council and members of the public may be familiar, again, with the H-DIP program. This is conceptually similar to H-DIP, in that, and that's the Housing Development Incentive Program. It requires a plan and a designated geographic area. So there are very unique differences between the two, but that's where it's similar, in that you need to have a plan and then that geographic area. In order to participate in the UCH TIF program, the municipality must adopt a detailed plan that designates the area with high business or commercial use. And it also has to include, or in the plan, identify what the development plans are in the area. The plan also has to include the executed agreements with property owners who will be doing development and who will be receiving tax increment exemptions. And that last bullet is just noting the state requirements. The state only requires at least 15% of housing units assisted by a TIF be affordable at 80% of the area median income, and this project is more than, is 100%, and it's deeper levels, but that's just the state requirement. So in the development, in the UCH TIF plan in front of you, you'll see the only development project in the plan is Lee Fort Terrace. The only tax increment agreement is with B.C. Lee Fort Terrace. And so this is really the meat of the proposal, the terms of the proposed tax increment finance agreement. If you recall that prior draft, it's very similar. The gray bars are representing the exempt taxes. The orange is representing taxes paid on that new value. And then the blue is the retained tax for the term. So this is proposing a 15-year term, and as you can see, it essentially burns off over time. Year one, the base tax would be $41,814, around that. And again, currently, no taxes are paid. This would be post-sale. You'd be at $41,000. The estimated development investment is around $29 million, the expected value of the project. So the taxes for a $29 million project in total are $384,000, $384,250,000. So year one, base taxes, the $41,000 would be retained, and it's proposing 100% of the increment, so that incremental taxes being $342,435 would be exempt. And then, as you can see on the chart again, it gets reduced each year. So by the time you get to year 14 and 15, 30% of the increment would be exempt, and then year 16, we're back to the full tax rate. So that would be that $342,000, plus the blue bar at the 41, resulting in the full $384,000. So over the full 15-year term, the city will collect about $2.7 million in taxes, and would be exempting about $2.9 million. So this last slide is proposing some revisions to the agreement, because as I noted before, those low-income housing tax credit program is just very competitive in a regular year. This is an exceptional year in competitiveness. And as Beacon was moving through their application, they decided to increase the minimum requirement from 13% of the units in the development at 30% area median income to 20% of the units at 30% area median income. So that increases it from 17 units to 25 units, and that creates a more competitive project with DHD. At the same time, as they have throughout, have noted throughout this process, is that they expect all 124 units, or 100% of the units, to have project-based vouchers associated with them, and that provides, you know, that deep level of affordability, so that any household under 50% area median income would qualify. And we have had a lot of questions around affordability, and so I just want to say again, there's a lot of layers to affordability in with this financing stack, in addition to the terms laid out in this TIF agreement. And usually what you see is these various programs have, each have their own restrictions. And the restrictions, they don't reference each other. So if you had a CPC restriction, that would be its own thing. If you had a LITEC, a low-income housing tax credit restriction, that would be its own thing. A TIF would be its own. They all prevail. They're all required, but they don't generally reference each other. But given all the concerns and questions we've heard around affordability, we're proposing to add this language into the TIF. Even if it's not in there, these requirements would still be part of the project, because it's required in other documents. And I'll read what this says. I know it's small writing and can be difficult to read. In this version, in the revised version, Beacon has introduced in recital three of the agreement, "As a condition to acquiring the property through the ground lease, the developer will enter into a disposition regulatory and operating agreement," that's a DRNO, "with both Salem Housing Authority and Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development." And that was part of a memorandum of understanding that Beacon and the housing authority had already agreed to, so it would have been required anyway. This is just adding it to the TIF. And then the second part, Beacon also adjusted recital four to include, "Of the 124 units in the building, at least 25 units will be restricted for lease to households earning no more than 30% of the area median income, as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, AMI, with the balance of new residential units restricted for lease to households earning no more than 60% AMI pursuant to the DRNO that was just referenced, and the affordable housing restricted restriction." Further, the DRNO will include the requirement to maintain onsite 50 one-bedroom housing units subject to Chapter 121B for the 99-year ground lease with public housing residents paying normal rent and related occupancy costs that would continue to pay as public housing residents. So again, this reference in the agreement is to make it clear that the 50 public housing units are subject to 121B, and to align with the DHD application that restricts the project of 25 units at 30% AMI. This is suggested to be added to the TIF for clarity. Again, if it's in there or not, these are still going to be part of the project. Again, the financing, it just has so many layers to it, and I'll give you one other example, is that the housing authority has an administrative plan, and that governs all the project-based vouchers. And in that administrative plan, it prioritizes selecting at least 40% of the residents at 30% area median income or below. So that's not in the TIF agreement. It's a separate document, but it's still required. So those, I just wanted to reference that, as there are a lot of layers to this. So that's the summary of the program, the proposed agreement. Me and my colleagues and the team from Beacon and Salem Housing Authority would be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Amanda. I also would like to recognize that Councillor Ricardi is in attendance via Zoom, and on not being members of the committee, we have Council President Mosillo, Councillor Prozinski, Councillor Cohen, and Councillor Varela. I neglected to mention them at the start. With that, I'll open it up to the councils first. Any questions? Councillor Watsonfeldt?
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. I have a couple of questions, and we'll take them one at a time for Amanda to have the opportunity to reply. The first question I have is with regards to the designated sites within the UCH TIF area. I have some questions about how the, and why the H&amp;H Propeller shop and the Bentley Academy Innovation School and the Salem Early Childhood School are all part of this area?
Sure. So all of those are included to ensure that it meets the requirement of a primarily commercial district.
Can you speak to the implications, then, for future development on those sites following the designation of the area?
It doesn't change anything. No development is proposed on any of those sites. Again, that's just the area to include in the plan as a primarily commercial area.
Would you consider, though, for future, that that would be an incentive for future developers to want to purchase and build on those lands, because it's already considered a part of this area, and they could seek a TIF?
Well, any TIF would need approval from the city council. Everything is on a project-by-project basis. And again, there's no development proposed on any of those, and any future development, if it were proposed, would need approval from the city council for a TIF. And the school, we need the school there, so there's no intention of redeveloping that.
So two follow-up questions. I guess the question to clarify is, would it be considered an incentive for developers?
I mean--
Is there data that supports it would be considered a potential incentive for developers to seek purchasing those properties?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chair, Councillor Watsonfeld, hi. Tom Daniel, Planning Director. So I know Amanda mentioned the Housing Development Incentive Program. I think another thing to think about are commercial TIFs. So both the Housing Development Incentive Program and commercial TIFs are eligible citywide. They both started out the same way. They started with a small area, that then grew over time as regulations from the state allowed that to happen. So I think the corollary is to those. And so there are tools that are available. I think what Salem has done is look to tools that the state provides to support development, whether that's housing or commercial. You know, this is an affordable housing tool. H-DIP is a market housing tool. Commercial is obviously a jobs tool. And so I think those are the correlators that one could draw, for to the extent to which this is or is not an incentive. It's a tool that may or not be used, depending on the project. As Amanda said, there's no intention for anything within this boundary to be utilizing, you know, the UCH TIF program beyond the Lee Fort Terrace project.
So I just, in my mind, because recently, we had a conversation here in this chamber about the disposition of public land specifically, so I think to myself about the Bentley Academy School, for example. And so if we now have an understanding that the disposition of public land should be prioritized, first and foremost, for the purpose of affordable housing development, and now this falls within this area, that feels to me like a potential great marriage of perfect minds for additional affordable housing development on that, in that area. So I think from my mind, I'm just mapping those two, and if there's anything you'd like to add to that before I move on to my next question, it'd be--
Yeah, I think that presupposes the fact that the school would not be needed for the district, and if that were the situation where the district determined it no longer needed that school, then there would be a disposition process that would need to be followed. And as you say, the process for publicly-owned land, there's an assessment, a determination about what's the most appropriate based on, you know, the recently adopted rules for that. And if that determination were that this site were to be affordable housing, then this is a tool that could support that. But there's a lot of ifs before you would get to that point.
Yeah. And I know that we haven't yet seen the result either of the survey recently done, community-wide, about the use and purpose of the current school buildings, which I know went out this past year as well. So in my mind, as you can understand, I'm just connecting all the dots before, because I think they're all inputs into taking a really long-term look to this decision that is in front of us tonight. The second question I had, I no longer remember, so I will move on to the following one. Was there any notes coming out of the CONCON meeting on November 15th with regards to this item that Planning needs to take into consideration?
So the CONCON decision--
Yeah.
--impacting the project? No?
The use of the land, the project, anything like that. I hadn't had a chance to read the minutes, and I thought for public awareness, it would be good to just close that as well.
Yeah. So that CONCON is complete?
Excellent. Thank you. One last question, if I can find it. So now on the revised version of the agreement, and we're talking about numbers here. We have the 25 units restricted for lease to households earning no more than 30%, and we have the 50 one-bedroom public housing units to support those who are currently living there, who may seek to come to return. That 25 is a part of the 50, is that right? It's not 75 at 30 or below? It's 50, period?
They could be layered.
They could.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about that, just for the public's understanding, please?
Sure. So they don't have to be layered, but they could be. And so there's 50 units dedicated for public housing, subject to 121B, and there's 25 units that are restricted at 30% area median income. So it could be all 25 units. It could be a portion of those. They're not, they don't need to be layered, but they could be.
At the end of the TIF, this 15-year block of time we're talking about, would there be any change to the MOU, to any of the agreements that we're looking at tonight, anything that comes under review at the end of that clock?
I'm gonna, if it's okay with the chair, have the housing authority speak to the memorandum of understanding between them and Lee Fort, B.C. Lee Fort Terrace. That's not in front of you tonight, the MOU, but this is just bringing in that language from the MOU to align it.
Yeah, as you said before in your presentation, there are a lot of questions around the level of affordability, but also the number of units available, and I just want to make sure that everybody in the room is really clear about what that looks like, what that means for our current residents. Chair, is that all right with you?
That's fine. Thank you. And if we could just, the, what's in front of us tonight is the two agreements on the agenda, so we'll allow some leeway, but we're not going to go into broad-based discussions about what other boards' decisions were. Right now, we're talking about the Tax Increment Financing Agreement, and what's in front of us, and obviously, around that, there's some clarity that has to go with. We've received many questions about whether or not the residents are going to be guaranteed a spot when they return, and what kind of agreement does that look like. And that's all through the Salem Housing Authority. So I mean, I think at this time, we'll bring Kathy Hoag up, and maybe Courtney as well, from, and if someone wants to make that motion.
To clarify, Chair, thank you. I just wanted to make clear, my question is specifically around numbers, so that, so that I understand-- understand them and that everyone in the room understands them as well. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Kathy Hoag, Executive Director for the Salem Housing Authority. Good evening, everyone. So I believe the question was, what happens after the 15 years for the TIF? The developer would be expected to pay taxes. So in terms of the affordability and the arrangements, we don't anticipate anything to change. At some point in time, there likely could be some refinancing at that point in time in the future. There could be some negotiations around the terms for monies. Feel free to step in, Courtney, if I've left anything out.
You really have to speak into that microphone, too.
Hi, I'm Courtney Coslow from Beacon Communities, Two Center Plaza, Boston. And as Amanda referenced, the layering of all of these restrictions will continue on beyond those 15 years. So the 15 years, we will receive the tax increment financing, and then we pay the full taxes, as Kathy said. At that time, the affordability restrictions still remain. The project-based voucher contracts come in 20-year increments, so that is layered on for the next 20 years. We keep renewing it every 20 years, ongoing. The other DHCD funds have their own restrictions and terms that go on to 50 years or more, depending on the program. So the affordability continues.
Thanks, that's all my questions, Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. I had a follow-up question for further clarity for what Counselor Watsonfeld had asked. A quick question, for the newly designated area that was discussed and the ramifications moving forward for the other properties that are included in regards to TIF, does this newly designated area, does it change the process for development in general, aside from a TIF being allowed? Is there any other changes that would be a ramification for this classification of area? Thank you.
Thank you. So the area designation doesn't change any processes regarding development. Development process would still need to go through what it would today.
Thank you.
Is that it? I see that Counselor Hapworth has his hand up on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you guys hear me okay right now?
Yep.
Yeah, good. So the, I guess the first question, Amanda, you mentioned something about 40% of units are set aside at 30% AMI or lower. I think that's the first time I've heard that, and I didn't fully understand what that meant or what that was referring to. Can you briefly go over that again?
So that was an example to a reference in the Salem Housing Authority's administrative plan, in that, again, that governs project-based vouchers. And the administrative plan requires that the project-based vouchers that selects residents, at least 40% of the residents selected, have to be at incomes of 30% area median income or below.
So that applies, so clearly, that applies to this project. 40% of the 124 units will be at 30% AMI or below? I know there's many layers to this, and that's what I think has been confusing to a lot of us. Can you just confirm that? So, you know, roughly 50-ish, I'm not sure, I can't do the math in my head right now, but roughly 50-ish units or so?
So the Salem Housing Authority, they have several priorities identified in their administrative plan, and invite the Housing Authority to also speak to this. But if you think of it like a preference, so there's local preference for Salem residents in Salem, people who work here, there's preference for veterans, for Salem veterans, there's preference for 40% of the residents at 30% area median income or below.
Yeah, so it's understandable that all the numbers can be a little bit confusing with all the different programs and the layering. As Amanda mentioned earlier, it was used as an example of some of the layering that's already in place and how complicated it can be depending on the program. So the example was, the Housing Authority currently chooses from our waitlist, this is a determination that we've made, that we will choose 40% of folks from our waitlist to be at very low income. So that's 30% or below AMI. So it's highly likely that the folks chosen are going to be at that area median income, if that makes sense.
Okay. And so you'd say it's a fair statement that there will be more units, more residents living at 30% AMI or below after this project is complete than before?
It's highly likely, given what we have in place in our administrative plan, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. And the next question was just around the 50 units restricted to 121B. Can you just talk a little bit more about that? I believe that's for elderly and disabled, correct? Is there any other restrictions there? Are there affordability restrictions around that as well, or is it just elderly, disabled? Is that how I'm reading that?
So feel free to jump in if you'd like, Amanda, but the way, so what it essentially means is that we are agreeing to hold those 50 units as public housing units in perpetuity. So they're always going to be public housing units, essentially.
How long will the SHA waiting list be, what determines who lives on this property?
So for this property, it will have a separate waitlist. It'll have a project-based voucher waitlist, because the intention is to use project-based vouchers for this development. So it will have an entirely separate waitlist that will be opened, and folks will have an opportunity to apply for project-based vouchers for this particular site.
And that will be managed by the SHA?
Yes.
Okay. Who, I feel like I should know the answer to this question, but who will ultimately own this property? Will this continue to be owned by the SHA? How does that, I guess, how does that work for...
So we have a memorandum of understanding, and it's essentially a 99-year ground lease. So the Housing Authority owns the land, and Beacon will own the development.
Okay, makes sense. And then just the last question, why the, I guess, why the focus on AMI and the changes to AMI in here? I know a lot of this is just to be eligible for certain programs, but if I'm understanding this correctly, no matter what we set aside for units, each resident is going to pay 30% of their income, and vouchers are going to make up the difference between that and the fair market rent. So I guess my question is, are we splitting hairs around the AMI conversation? Does it ultimately, will it ultimately matter to the residents who are going to live there?
So I think, you know, the purpose for clarifying and adding additional language is so that, you know, the general public and the city council can really have a solid understanding of, you know, the fact that people are protected, and that there is an opportunity for people at a very low income to qualify for this particular development. You're correct in that the folks that qualify for the vouchers, their rent is determined based on their income. So they are protected essentially in that way.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to both of you, and everyone who's gone back and forth, a lot of the counselors who've had questions around this project. It's been, I think a lot of us felt that we knew a lot about affordable housing and maybe didn't know as much until we started.
It's entirely understandable. It's a very complicated, the layering of subsidies and all the different types of programs. And as Amanda referenced earlier, they don't always reference one another, but they all have their own different sets of requirements, and it is very complicated. So our intention really is just to ensure that everybody has a solid understanding, and most importantly, ensure that everyone knows that the residents that are currently there are going to be protected and they're going to qualify to return.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wow, who is this question directed to? I guess this question would be directed to the Housing Authority, I suppose. My question is specifically around, it's a follow-up question around the concept of the 99-year ground lease term. If I understand your response to the prior counselor's questions, the configuration will be such that the Housing Authority retains ownership of the land while Beacon is essentially owning and operating the development. So my question relative to that is why we're using the language of a 99-year ground lease term, essentially why we're using the term of the lease for determining how long units will be subject to 121B, as opposed to just using the language of in perpetuity? I think I asked this question at a prior engagement that we had, but my question tonight is, does that open the possibility at the end of that term for another operator to come in and operate these units without maintaining those 50 units as 121B? Because I've heard a lot of concern from people that this is not going to maintain these units as affordable actually into perpetuity, that there is going to be a finite amount of time, and then this is going to turn into regular housing. And I think that's a really fair concern, because, you know, if I've been blessed to have grandchildren, they will be alive when 99 years has gone by. So what really happens there?
I'm going to defer to Courtney on this question and step in if needed.
Hi, again, Courtney Coslow. I want to actually make it clear, we need to put in a term, a year of 99 years, but after that 99 years, the ownership of the entire property goes back to the Housing Authority. So it is essentially protected beyond that time.
So the Housing Authority, the ownership of the property will revert to the Housing Authority at the end of that term, unless the Housing Authority enters into another agreement with somebody else after that?
Correct, unless otherwise negotiated.
Understood. Thank you for that. My next question, it's more of a comment, but my next question, I suppose, is more directed to our planning department. It is a follow-up question about some of the questions asked by the Ward II counselor in terms of the configuration of the zone and why certain properties were included. It's a pretty straightforward question. I understood the prior response about those properties being included to sort of give a preponderance of the idea that this is a primarily commercial district. I'm looking at the map that was presented, and just using the eyeball test, it seems to me that footprint power alone clearly exceeds the 50% threshold for establishing that as a standard. So my question is, is it, just percentage-wise, just basically, is it necessary to include the school properties and the propeller property to meet that threshold, or is, are they included for the sake of essentially strengthening the case, whereas we could make the 51% otherwise?
So the UCH TIF program has been used by a few other communities in Massachusetts, Framingham, Lowell are a couple examples. This proposed UCH TIF is the smallest area that DHCD has ever seen. So it's a small area, and we had asked, you know, we had talked to DHCD about different scenarios, and again, there's no intention to redevelop the school, and so we posed the question, could we remove the school? And they weren't comfortable with that, because then you're removing that educational use, and so it needs to be a mix of commercial uses. And the school helps with that mix of commercial uses to meet the statute.
I just want to make sure I understood your response correctly. You had some conversations with DHCD while you were crafting this zone. When those conversations opened, did we initially propose to simply use footprint and Lee Fort Terrace, and they were like, mm, doesn't look so good to me, why don't you add some other things in here? Or did we go to the table with the school already on the table, and they were like, yeah, looks good?
It was a conversation, looking at the map and identifying what we would need to include. And so it was, the school was, you know, part of the discussion, but it was a conversation.
Okay, thank you for that. My next question is about the term, the overall term of the TIF in question, the 15-year term, and what, to me, seems to be a relatively aggressive rate of forgiveness. Just, you know, speaking as somebody who doesn't do this on a day-to-day basis, but has had a chance to review the project, we're looking at a property which is not generating taxes right now. Its assessed value is going to come onto the books at a relatively low number, right? Like $40,000 is not much money for that parcel in that location, but it's going to be undeveloped. I understand there's going to be some demolition costs associated with the project, and that's not free. But you're talking about land that is coming, on the whole, relatively cheap, there's going to be prorated tax payments during construction, so it's not immediately going to come to a high number. And if I understand correctly, over the life of the TIF, the savings on taxes are going to exceed the taxes paid, which is, in my mind, pretty aggressive. So I just want to know if there's any way, basically, that that can be shaved down, either in terms of term or in terms of basic amount? And if not, like, what is the reason for that? What are we getting out of that aggressive savings schedule? Because it does, it does impact, in my mind, sort of the general tax landscape for the people in Salem, right? We're giving away a lot of tax money.
Sure. I'd like to defer that to the folks at Beacon.
Thank you. So as affordable housing financing is a complex thing, as we're talking about with, just talking about the rent, the permanent mortgage is also its own very complex piece, and our operating budget, of which the real estate taxes are a part of, is more than a market-rate development. We have resident services, we have a really robust property management site on staff, and we have a lot of requirements around inspections and making sure the government, because they're giving us money, comes in on a regular basis and makes sure everything is, like, holes in screens are filled, you know, that we're really, it makes for a really great product. It's more expensive. So the TIF is actually, has been set at the exact level to allow us to have the minimum amount of debt service coverage that we can get for a loan. If we didn't have these real estate tax abatement at this amount, our permanent loan is at risk. It's not really feasible. And that is because with affordable housing as well, the rents are less than market-rate rents, so the whole formula kind of is balanced. And that's why the government has these programs to incentivize developers like Beacon and the Housing Authority and others to do affordable housing. And these tools are what helps fill the gap in all sorts of ways. So that's why this TIF is as much. In addition, the 15 years is also the same term as the low-income housing tax credit in equity period of time. There's also another program the government has in place to keep an investor, a private investor, not Beacon, involved in a project for 15 years to make sure it's kept up well, and they need to see a consistent operating budget for those 15 years. So if it dropped off, it's also a problem from that perspective.
Thank you for that response, I appreciate it. I do have one more question, if I can find my notes. Yes, this is actually a really specific suggestion for one of the terms within the TIF, so this is certainly directed to our planning staff. We haven't sort of gotten past the zone into the TIF yet, but we're talking, so we may as well. This is for Section D of the agreement, item number four. It's the clawback clause, right? So if any sort of portion of the agreement is not being met, then it gives the city the option to pursue the developer, to terminate the agreement and say, hey, you know, you're not keeping up with what you're supposed to do, so we have the option to turn this down. I have sort of a longstanding principle feeling that those things should be really automatic. I don't feel great about the idea that we have the option of pursuing remedy within 30 days, but it's sort of at our option, and, you know, we can sort of work. I really like to see clawbacks be ironclad, so I'm really suggesting very specifically in the fourth line of that item, that we just change one single word. If any such default shall occur, the city may pursue remedy. I think that should just be changed to shall. I think that it reads to really have teeth. I think anybody that we enter into a tax increment agreement with really needs to know that, like, your feet are to the fire here, like, you need to do this, you need to do this well, you're responsible for doing it. If you're not doing it, this agreement is going to go away. And it's not going to be because we had a conversation and we finally got annoyed about it. It's going to happen automatically, and you need to fix it. And that's like a principle thing that I feel about, and I'd really like to see that changed. And that's all my comments.
Thank you, Counsel McLean. Tom, any response to that? I mean, if my old friend Counsel O'Keefe was here, he'd be wordsmithing me to death over the difference between may and shall, so...
Yeah, I think that, you know, the shall, the may provides for options for, I don't have the whole language in front of me here for the process for remedies, but in walking up, I think Beacon is comfortable with shall, so I think that's a... walking up, I think Beacon is comfortable with shall. So I think that's an acceptable amendment.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take that up. Bring that in as amendment after. Thank you. Anyone else? Council Merkel.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. I was just going to ask for clarification exactly with the languages with, that you're referring to with all the pages in front of us. Thank you.
It's in this agreement, right?
Section D.
It's on page six in Section D, Article Four. It is the fourth line down.
Since we're all here, you want to do it now?
Sure. Is this the item that we're, are we still on the zone designation?
We've taken them both up at the same time.
Okay. So then I will make a motion right now to make an amendment to page six, Section D, Article Four, to amend the language that it reads instead of, if any such default shall occur, the city may, and instead shall read, if any such default shall occur, the city shall.
I'd second that.
The motion on the floor by Council McLean, seconded by Council Watson felt that on page six, Section D and paragraph four, the word may, the word shall shall be changed to the word may. Is that correct?
May.
May to shall. I'm sorry, the other way around. Thank you. I knew I was getting it wrong. That it will be changed from may to shall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll have to do a roll call vote because Councilor Hapworth is remote. We have Council McLean.
Yes.
Council Merkel.
Yes.
Councilor Watson felt.
Yes.
Councilor Hapworth.
Yes.
And myself, yes. On the matter of the changing of the word in section, on page six, Section Four, Section D, paragraph four, from may to shall, we have five councilors voting, five in affirmative of the matter of the amendment carries. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no member of the committee at this time, I, before I open it up, I am in receipt of two correspondence from two individuals who have been advocating, I mean, have been talking about this project for a while in different venues. And, oh, sorry. I keep forgetting. So we have one dated December 7th. Dear Councilors, Mayor Driscoll has submitted the City Council approval for a proposed TIF in support of development in affordable housing to replace the existing Lee Fort Terrace public housing development of 50 units for senior veteran disabled housing with 124 units of housing in a floodplain. Having attended more than 30 hours of public meetings in connection with the private developers' Beacon LLC's 40B proposal, I have several questions, concerns regarding this matter. Presently before your committee, I would hope that the council and the performing as new deal officers will consider I will present these concerns in the form of these questions. First, who will the TIF ultimately benefit? The residents, the developers, the Salem Housing Authority? And how has this been determined? Second, is the TIF not, if not approved, who will be impacted? Beacon, Beacon's investors, the residents due to a reduction of services? How has this been determined? Third, why has the cost of this project ballooned from $69 million to $79 million in the short span of two years? What documents have the City Council received regarding the financing of this project from inception to present? Fourth, has the plan been adopted, of which the current, has a plan finally been adopted, of which the current residents are informed and understand regarding the displacement and relocation? If it is in writing, does the council have a copy? Normally, nationally, only 28% of residents of public housing return to their location of, location after reconstruction. These residents are among our city's most vulnerable. It is essential that Salem's government representatives do right by them. Fifth, what guarantees, if any, are being given to the preference for Salem residents once the development is completed and in the future when the vacancies occur? Sixth, rather than providing the significant tax benefits to the for-profit corporation, has the City Council consider assessing the full tax on the property consistent with the prevailing tax classification rates and dedicating these taxes to the city's affordable housing programs, which are seldom adequately funded? In this way, the housing project will benefit residents who face housing affordability challenges. I believe that it is important to note that no, that at no time during the developers' neighborhood meetings and public hearings before the zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, and planning board, the developer mentioned that their development required a TIF in order to permit, construct, manage, or develop. Rather, Beacon constantly assumed, assured the developments' residents, the neighborhood, and the various municipal agencies and offices charged with reviewing the development, that the development was on sound fiscal ground, that Beacon assumes all risks associated with the ownership. I do know what representation Beacon has made to the investors regarding opportunity, but I would like to know. Additionally, Beacon has cited superior ability to satisfy the challenging criteria required to secure and maintain the state and federal funding to make this project successful. Beacon has assured all the individuals and agencies that would be able to provide the residents with much better services and programming than the underfunded Salem Housing Authority was able to provide. In light of these representations, who will ultimately benefit from the significance tax dollars that the city of Salem will not receive? I hope that the City Council will retain this proposal in committee until more information is available to members and to the general public regarding the financial housing details associated with the Lee Fort Terrace project. Sincerely, Richard Stafford, 30 Borgman Street, Salem. Additional, oops, sorry. Just to keep this for the record. Additionally, I have another correspondence sent to me by Mr. Capandis. Good evening, City Council members. I am Steve Capandis and I reside at 23 West Surger Street. You can ask all the questions and believe all the answers. However, if you want the absolute truth, it can be found in the contract with Beacon Properties. The contract requires that only 17 units must be provided for families earning 30% AMI or lower long-term. This is not, this is not a good deal for Salem and this body can make it sure that it improve by requiring 50 units at 30% AMI. Does this mean only 17 of the 30 AMI, 30 of the AMI will be provided? The short answer is no. Since the 47 families currently reside at Lee Fort Terrace will be allowed to reside in the new building, initially there will be approximately 45 units at the 30% AMI level. So why is this important for this body to require 50 units at 30% AMI? In the contract, there is a few important reasons. One is the language confined by the four corners of the contract will be the legal determination of what is required. This contract will be the foundation of future contracts with Beacon. This body has been focused on delivering long-term housing goals. Long-term, the current language of the contract allows for the reduction from 50 units at 30% AMI down to 17 units. There is no guarantee that this will maintain what currently we have. You have the opportunity to, via 2.8 million TIF, to have the contract reflect a minimum of 50 units at 30% AMI in perpetuity. Do not punt the football to the, football 15 to 20 years into the future so that a different city council must correct something that you dealt with. Now, I vote to allow a $2.8 million TIF must be conditional upon 50 units at 30% AMI written in the contract. Thank you for your time. Steve Capandis. With that, I would ask that, anybody in the audience who has a comment, excuse me?
Chair, I believe there was one more that came in to us, if you'd like to read it.
Sure.
And I am just going to grab it. I saw it today. And I thought all of us were on it, but let me double check.
If you would like to, you could.
Sure, it is, it did. It come in, it came in to the city councilors, and you were CC'd on it as well. So it came in this afternoon, December 7th, at 1:36 PM. Dear Council President Musillo, A&amp;F Chair McCarthy and Committee of the whole council, I will not be able to attend tonight's public hearing re-tax increment financing for Lee Fort Terrace. Accordingly, I am sending you my comment via this email. I very much support tax increment financing for Lee Fort Terrace as the development will add substantially to the amount of affordable housing in the city and provide much better housing for the current developments' existing tenants. I trust you all to work out the details of the TIF. Thank you for the work you do for Salem. Judith Riley, 20 West Ave, Unit 3, Salem, Mass.
Thank you. I actually did receive that and I neglected to print that out before I came. I apologize for that. Anyone else? Seeing none. We'll, we'll open it up and we'll go around the room from the left to the right. I would ask that you make all your comments from the podium, speak directly into the microphone, name an address for the record, and all comments go through the chair. This is not going to get into a back-and-forth with any member, anybody else in the audience. So if you can direct your comments through me and then we'll compile, do we want to compile the questions and answer them all at the end? Or do we want to take them individually? I'll leave that up to Amanda. And you want to compile them all at the end?
At the end.
At the end? Fair enough. So we'll start over here on the left. Mayor Harrington. I'm always of the belief, once a mayor, always a mayor. It's kind of, once you're a councilor, always your council.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, through you. To the Planning Director, I just have two questions. One is, unlike commercial TIFs, am I to believe that this type of TIF does not require any job creation? Is that accurate? He can, he can come up later, I suppose, and answer. And the second is, I'm familiar with the Chapter 40B process, which legally restricts development, developers to a certain margin of profit. Is there any such restriction on this project? And if not, or if there is, what is the developer's margin of profit? That's the only two questions that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Harrington, we need everyone to say their name and address.
Let's, okay.
Thank you, Councilor, for reminding me. I live at 61 Weatherly Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone on the left, over here, going around the room? Thank you. Whoops. There you go. Microphone's way up there.
My name is T.C. Riley Gargan. And if I wasn't mixed up when I came through the door, I am now. The one thing I don't really understand, and I hear it used all the time, is affordable housing and vouchers. Would the apartments be affordable if the people did not have a voucher? For how many years is this same person allowed to have this voucher? Is there any time limit where there is incentive to move people on and out, not needing a voucher? That's one of my questions. But my other one, people, is about Lee Fort Terrace. I'm not quite sure exactly who owns the property at Lee Fort Terrace. Is it the City of Salem? Is it the Salem Housing Authority? I think about the park system here in our city. Parks can't be sold. They can't be built upon once they are declared parks. The City of Salem declared many, many years ago, Lee Fort Terrace, land for the seniors, and built them brick houses. Does that mean that now they can change what it was zoned for before, to turn it over to a private contractor to come in and put a high rise up in a neighborhood that is really and truly so residential, it doesn't have any properties of that magnitude? This reminds me a bit, or quite a bit, of a fairy tale that I grew up upon, who read to my grandchildren. Most of you probably know of it. And that is the one where if you huff and you puff, and are you with me, folks, right now? It's a story of three owners of property. One that took great care in building their house, he thought. So the big bad wolf came along and huffed and puffed, and the house was gone, so wasn't the owner. The next one figured he had a pretty good one, huffed, puffed, the big bad wolf. And then the second owner was gone. Come to the third one, that was a smart senior. They built their house of brick. The big bad wolf huffed and puffed, and huffed and puffed. But right again, that little smart senior was behind his door, safe and sound. My question right now to all of you is, how many times can you huff and puff? And how many times, you, the council, right now, I want to know, are you going to take and declare this land surplus? Is it surplus now? Are you the ones who declare it surplus so it can be sold to this contractor? Are you going to join the rest of the big bad wolf clubs? Wolves travel in packs. Are you going to be part of a pack? Are you going to say to the 47 seniors who live in these brick houses down there at Lee Fort Terrace, are you going to be told, you're going to tell them, how many of you have gone to see these seniors? And look them in the eye and said, after 35 years of you living here, you now have to move? We have people down there, one woman, who is over 100 years old, 107, I've been told. We have another woman who carries a white cane. She knows every inch of her apartment. She knows how to walk around downtown Salem. Now, I know that you expect that you absolve your conscience by saying, well, we're going to find them someplace to live. Is it going to be up off Boston Street? Is it going to be behind Shaws? Where are you going to send these people if you declare that they could no longer have their brick? Brick, brick, as we say. Will you huff and puff and they still stand tall? Are you going to call in, you know, the bulldozers to tear these places down? Are you going to be the big bad wolves that people years from now say they're the ones who said to the 47 seniors, we don't have any more use for you seniors. We can put you anyplace we want. I say it's time. Look in the mirror, people. Look, councilors, the big bad wolf. Make this fairy tale realistic. Make it come true for these 47 seniors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabe Fields. I'm an activist with United Front Against Displacement. We're a national organization that's been fighting against these privatizations of public housing and all the different gentrification that's, you know, happening in our cities. And I think it's pretty obvious that with these sorts of projects, they're not about providing affordable housing to people. In Beacon's property where they've privatized Old Colony in Boston, they've treated residents like prisoners and criminals, surveilling people in, in public spaces and yelling at them to disperse over loudspeakers when too many people gather. And that's if people even make it back, which most people never do because they only want certain sorts of people to come back to these properties once they've redeveloped them. And also, you know, the housing authorities and the developers are so disorganized, they're not really able to do so in the first place. So, I mean, it's pretty clear, this is a, just a quick cash grab for the developers and for the banks that finance them. It's an opportunity for the government to wash its hands of having any responsibility over public housing. And it's a, it's a way to open up the area for even more gentrification in the future. What people don't really talk about is that these sorts of units, they call them income restricted units, AMI units, Section Eight units, they're not public housing. They're less affordable. They have less protections. And they're also often more profitable than building market rate housing because of all the different layers of government handouts, of people's tax money, that's going into the pockets of these developers. The tax credits, the different, all different sorts of funds, the Section Eight funding. And now you want to give them a $3 million tax break? It's pretty ridiculous. They're going to take brick buildings that have been standing for 60 years. I'm sure they've been, done quite a terrible job, but the Housing Authority taking care of them, but they're very solid. When they do these sorts of constructions, even the architects who design these buildings admit that they're only built to last 30 or 40 years. So I guess we don't really need to worry about the floodplains because they'll be falling apart by then anyway.
Excuse me, could you, your comments specifically to the agreement, please?
What's that?
Your comments specifically to the tax agreement and the zone that's in front of us?
Yeah, so my question, you know, we know that Mayor Driscoll has been bought off by real estate developers.
Excuse me. Specific, specific.
Let me finish my question.
Specific to the zone. There's no, once again, comments through me and no attacking of anybody. So if you want to make a comment.
We've seen that Beacon has directly bribed activists in the community, offering to redo their windows in their houses in exchange for them stopping to fight against this. So my question is, who's the financing partner for this project? It's not Beacon who's going to have majority ownership. When they do these sorts of projects, there's always a financing partner who provides the financing, who has majority ownership in different properties. In Boston, it's been Bank of America. So I'd like to know who actually is going to be owning the majority of the development, who's going to be profiting off of people's tax money? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to make sure everyone says their name and address when they come to the podium.
Thank you. Next, anyone on the left circling around?
Okay. My name is Tia Wheeler, and I'm actually visiting your city from Boston, Massachusetts. I do apologize if I don't look up. There's quite a few of you here. Basically, I live, I live over.
If you could just, I appreciate you not wanting to look up. Could you just speak directly into the microphone? Just a little closer. Just a little closer, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I do apologize for that.
No, no problem.
Okay, well, basically, you know, I guess my question comes from kind of like, more of a cautionary tale, because I live in, as I said, I'm visiting from Boston, Massachusetts. And one of the issues that my own neighborhood, the Mildred C. Haley Development, has is that, you know, kind of, as this lady has basically mentioned, you know, it was a much older development. It's made out of brick. It's been, it's kind of lasted through the world wars and everything. But, you know, because of our housing development, it was basically, you know, it was run down, and then they basically, you know, said they had to redevelop it. And they basically, you know, were making all these talks about, you know, you know, redeveloping it, having it by the AMI and everything. But the problem is, is that, over in Boston, the AMI basically also covers, you know, for just the area that I live in, also basically covers, sort of like, the AMI of a neighboring town, which basically makes a lot more money than the people who live there are. And thus, as a result, the people who, the people who live there, who currently live in my neighborhood, their rents and everything stand to shoot up and everything as soon as, you know, these redevelopments happen. So I guess my question is, kind of, once again, like, what was asked earlier? Kind of like, you know, how is the, how is basically, you know, grouping, grouping all of those parcels of land together? Basically, how is it actually going to affect the tenants themselves? Is it going to still remain affordable for the, for the people of Lee Fort, who basically live in 100% affordable housing and everything? Who, from what I, from what I hear, many of them basically are elderly and disabled and probably have a fixed income? Is this going to negatively affect them? Okay, so I'm going to get out of your hair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacia Kraft, 140 Federal Street.
Thank you.
I have a lot of feelings about this project, related to how the tenants have been treated through the process. And also, the area that we're now going to not rezone, but call an area. You all have access to the same things I'm reading. So you must know that scientists are urging communities to develop policies, to move infrastructures out of disaster-prone areas. And you also probably know that the UN has called on governments around the world to relocate infrastructure. And they're also determining that over 1,000 affordable housing units, which are often built in what you would call kind of wasteland or floodland, are expected to go under by 2050. And if you've watched the inundation maps that have just been created, you know that the area which you are now incentivizing will be underwater. So that doesn't sit well with me, and people don't talk about it enough. You know that the Supreme Court, the Massachusetts Supreme Court, ruled on that Boston development. And that will affect, you know, so the Seaport area. The new project was ruled twice on. And that'll affect our harbor plans from Gloucester to Medford. It will affect us. So Seaport, another one. Climate-ready Boston predicts it's going to be increasingly underwater. And making these kinds of investments without really accounting for the future value or the conditions is really unwise. So we do a lot of talking about affordable housing and citing people in this area. It's incredibly concerning to me, and we don't talk enough about it. And now, as far as the process, I can just tell you that because I am a member of Not For Salem, people often contact me. And I was contacted two years ago, or whenever this started, by somebody anonymously to come to a meeting, an outdoor meeting. And when I came to this meeting, I was basically physically intimidated by three of the hosts and asked not to come in. And I told them that they'd have to call the police, because I was invited to come by a resident. And I did go in and sit at that meeting. I can also tell you that there was another outdoor meeting that I was invited by another resident to come to, because they feel they need support. They feel they're going to be pointed out and get poorer placement if they speak up. So that's why you're not really seeing too many people. But at that meeting, the police were called, and so I was not able to go. In October, one of the residents said, you know, we really have been not able to Zoom. I mean, if you know older people, or people who don't really use the internet, they can't really access Zoom. So this person asked me to call, is it Lisa Camerata? To get special ADA help, so they could participate. And she basically told me, in an email, that Zoom has been shown to increase accessibility of the disabled and elderly residents. And that's how that was handled. So you can imagine that we do have a lot of questions about Beacon communities. The way they introduced the project at first was this big, you know, market rate unit. And then with feedback from the community, they've changed. But it's, it has not been a straightforward process where we would be trusting of what they're saying. So I do hope that you, and you've asked some good questions today. You keep asking questions, and don't let this be sort of loose. And again, I would not be incentivizing building on this area and cite more people there. I would be thinking about how to move the people that do live here to another location, when and if things start to look bad, as they're predicted. So that's the end of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. I granted a lot of leeway on that. Just if we could keep the comments to the financing agreement that's in front of us. Next. Frank.
Hi, my name's Frank Kulik.
Frank, if you could, even me with my boisterous voice, I got to really talk into him, so, right into it.
My name's Frank Kulik.
Thank you.
I live at 3 Allen Street in Salem. This is familiar territory for me. I never thought I'd be here in this, under this context. Anyway, there was just a couple remarks I'd like to make. I'm in my 80s now. I never thought I'd go by that fast. But, and my wife and I, fortunately, along with Tzzy, we own our homes. I can't imagine, right now, at this stage of my life, being told by somebody I had to move. It would be very traumatic, and I would be very unhappy. So there are people living at Lee Fort Terrace right now that are confronted with that situation. And I think compassionate people would really think about that for quite some time. I think it's worthy of some thought. Secondly, I believe that lot, or zone, or whatever it's called, when we went back to that slide with the two, I think it was purple. I think that slide that was presented earlier, that showed, I think it was, it had to be within a 60% commercial. Is that correct? In order to determine the size of the lot that you're dedicating to this project?
Are you referring to the UTIF, the UTIF zone? The map, the picture?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
And I think that's predicated on the power plant, isn't it?
That was included in there.
Well, Salem's kind of unique in that, out of the 300-some-odd communities in the Commonwealth, only a few have power plants. So when they crafted that law, or that legislation, I'm pretty sure they probably were thinking about something like Highland Avenue with a whole lot of commercial development, or a mall, or something along those lines. So maybe that's something you might want to keep in back of your mind, that if we didn't have the power plant, that lot wouldn't be there. It wouldn't qualify. Secondly, the power plant is the type of commercial property that is, we have a tax agreement with. So it's not ad valorem taxation, like every other commercial property on Highland Avenue, et cetera. So I don't know how relevant that is to the calculation. But I'm sure the people that crafted this opportunity were thinking more of commercial property like Highland Avenue, or the mall, or something like that, because there are only a few places in Massachusetts that have a power plant of that size. So that's something you might want to mull over. The spirit of the law, I think, was more on the side of the Highland Avenue than it is on the side of the power plant. And the power plant is not taxed in an ad valorem context. You guys all dealt with the power plant agreement. So you're familiar with that. Anyway, I just thought I'd throw out those little food for thought and hope you do think about it a little bit. Just imagine yourself in your 80s, being told to move. I think that's very important. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Justin Woodier, Ten River Street. I'm a president of FESNA, but I'm speaking my personal capacity. I just want to note that I have an indigent member of family at home, so I was hoping to join by phone tonight, but I could not find any option for that. So I had to race down here to be sure that my public comment could be heard. And that's something that needs to be rectified. There is so much tonight about this proposal that needs answering. The public hearing must not be closed tonight. I understand that proposing this zone may be an effort to support the redevelopment of Lee Fort Terrace. But, the proposed redevelopment of Lee Fort Terrace itself is a subject of much controversy, not least because of the questions of affordability raised by the current proposal itself. As you know, it was promised that all current residents could return at their current rent, that is, 30% of AMI. Tonight, we've heard that 17 to 25 units might be eligible for that rent. That would be a breach of the promise. We have not heard tonight that that promise will be honored. That needs to be clarified. And in my opinion, it needs to be returned to the 50 units. Even if one accepts that proposed redevelopment, this proposed zone, or area, is a different matter. And is this the best tool to support it? Let's be sure that everyone recognizes what this zone would do. It incentivizes large-scale development. Calling it a tool is a distraction. The point is, we're creating land which can now have this tool applied. So let's not be distracted by the use of the word "tool" versus "incentive." So where is this being applied? It's being applied on the site of the Bentley School, on the adjacent parkland, on the power plant property. In case anyone says, well, we wouldn't sell a school or parkland for development. As Counselor Watson felt has noted tonight, we have just amended our ordinances to prioritize housing in the disposal of city property. In other words, in selling city property, like schools or parks, we are prioritizing affordable housing. That works perfectly with this TIF. And there have been multiple efforts, over the past half dozen years, to sell city land for housing. I know, because I have paid attention to them, and I have heard them all. So to this area, let's remember that all of this area is deep within a flood zone. There is no way in which any responsible city government would be contemplating development here, in any case. Is this area even eligible for UCH TIF? Ms. Jean Colas cited earlier tonight, the "and" portion of the guidelines. But what the "and" portion of the guidelines adds on to is what is fundamentally applicable. What is that? UCH TIF zone is meant for, and I cite the specific regulation, Massachusetts 760, CMR 58, the area where a UCH TIF zone may be created is, quote, "an area of concentrated development," as that term is defined in Section 2 of Chapter 40R, characterized by predominance of commercial land uses and need for multi-unit residential properties. In case you're wondering, how the term is defined in Section 2 of 40R, which I just mentioned, it is "a center of commercial activity." Not that there is one, or several, commercial uses present, like H&amp;H, or like the staging area for the offshore wind, which we know is going to come in. So this definition doesn't apply to the area in question. This is not a center of commercial activity. It is not characterized by predominance of commercial land units. The predominant use of this area is growing grass. I think you all know that. There is no need for multi-unit properties in this area. In my opinion, the proposed TIF zone is too blunt an instrument with too many unknown and undesirable consequences to justify its use here. Again, much has been made about the distinction between area and zone. That's a distinction without a difference. This TIF requires that there is, likewise, that if there is noncompliance, the city must provide a description of how noncompliance will be addressed, including proposed new zoning. Well, all of the area within this proposed new zone does not comply with large-scale development. So it would all require rezoning. So the line that this doesn't relate to rezoning is simply not accurate. I hope that you will not close the public hearing tonight, so that many more of these questions can be answered. But ultimately, I hope that you will vote against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please, please don't pause. No, no applause. Thank you. Thank you. And for the record, while the question of whether or not you could dial in came up, I went to the city's website on my phone, pulled up the calendar, and clicked on the link to this meeting, and up popped what I read at the beginning of the meeting, which included the link to the Zoom link, and it also included the toll-free number, which you could call. Just for clarity. With that? Yep? Go ahead.
My name is Joseph Doyle, Lee Fort Terrace. Does anyone seem to realize that today's December 7th? And that a lot of people died, left their body parts in their minds in different parts of the world, in honor of you people that sit here today? And your main obligation is to protect the citizens. And it seems to be an ancillary discussion about talking about human beings and the human consequence. This gentle lady was very accurate. So was this gentleman.
If you could keep your comments directly through me, please. Not want to engage anyone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we could, please. Thank you.
Yeah, we're pleased, yeah. Well, pleased about the computers when you defended yourself? We haven't even met the criteria to even have this meeting. All these meetings that were supposed to have happened never really happened in order to get here. Because I've tried twice, when it was supposed to have meetings on the Zoom, all the numbers, you can't get in. So everyone is talking about themselves, and the quota, stockholders, or money, whatever holders, they never had any input. So the meetings that happened in order to get here, never really happened. So it's bogus, and it's an ongoing fraud. So I'm not really good at this. I'm not a public speaker. But the main deal here is that this thing has been changed several times. And I talked to someone, when they're talking about vouchers, you're going to have to real-qualify every year, all kinds of paperwork, and there is a time limit there. Right now, it ain't broke. It doesn't have to be fixed. I checked it out. It hasn't flooded in 52 years. It's a green space, a watershed, quiet. And it's relative to the fabric of what Salem is. It's a quiet little space, regional. 100%, 100% of the homeowners in the area do not want this to happen. 80% of the people at Lee Fort Terrace don't want this to happen. And we still haven't been able to get our common area back, which we were promised a long time ago. And the representatives for Kathy Ho, who were involved with a couple of people from Lee Fort, haven't been able to deliver that. And they've lost all credibility with the people that are there, because we still don't have a common area to discuss the issue and come to a general consensus. But this is one of the last green spots in Salem, with the park, and the school, and the quiet, which is exactly what the World War II crowd built it for. When people that are ill, elderly, and on their last legs, have one foot on a banana peel ill, elderly and on their last legs, have one foot on a banana peel and another one in the grave, taking a little quiet, a little peace, and it never really happens. But now, let's not do that. Let's just rip everyone out. How would you people like it if I said to you, "Hey, I got a good idea, I got some money, and I want you all to move in six weeks, and I'm going to bring people in to help you move and volunteer to all your property, and yeah, you can come back maybe." "Oh, that's a change." "No, you can't come back." "Oh, you can come back." "No, you can't come back." "You will come back." "No, you can't come back." "Well, eventually get you back. We'll be back over here back." "But let's not worry about that. Let's worry about this section, that section, that section, this layer, that layer, this competition, that competition." When actually, why don't you just leave it alone? There's a couple of units that need to be repaired. This thing is going to rocket between $100 million to $200 million. The timeframe is going to go to between two and a half to three and a half years. Beacon has a history. There are other issues that I could get specific on, because I hear some people looking into stuff, and you wouldn't believe some of the fingerprints that are on this. So I'll say it again. Beacon has a history, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And don't put a bunch of ill elderly people on the spot, which is what you're doing now. The tail is wagging the dog. The people on the outside who aren't here are going to make all the money, and the taxpayers of Salem are going to make left with all the mess and the wreckage for the ill and elderly. You're going to accelerate some deaths. Between two and five people are going to die behind this. Enjoy that. That's a fact, and that's the real problem here. Facts for truth to trust. You should be ashamed to even being considered putting all the elderly online, and anyone who votes for this is going to have a dark mark on their soul.
Excuse me. No applause, please. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next up. All right, we done? Everyone on the left-hand side is all set? Gentlemen with the camera, are you all set? Okay? Just checking. We're going to go to the right. Anyone in the back? Coming across. Flora.
Flora Tontat, 30 Northeast Street. I'm here to support Lee Fort Terrace. I've been to planning board meeting, design review board meeting, conservation commission. This project has, you know, been improved by public input as well as, you know, the process of the commissions, the boards, their input. It's been a rigorous process. So I'm just in full support, and I really appreciate, commend you on the thoughtful questions tonight. And I just want to put my support behind it.
So you have no issues with the tax agreement or the zone?
No, I think the changes that was made, the major show was great.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Hi, all. My name is Shannon Bailey. I live at 32 Lee Fort Terrace. I am president of the local tenant organization, Lee Fort Terrace Tenants Association. I'm coming up here because there seems to be like this common theme of the night and of this, from the beginning of this project, basically with the assumption that we're a bunch of old and elderly and crippled people who have no brains, basically. From the very beginning of this project, I have worked personally on this from the get-go, regardless of what other tenants here that are against this believe. I have talked to them more than I've spoken to my own family, and I'm not even kidding. I have emailed for days to prove it. And here's the truth of the matter. I did my due diligence. I did my research. I asked questions. I asked for proof. We are sinking. I have lived there for 21 years now. I've lived in Salem for over 40 years. To say that I am not doing my job and just throwing it to the wayside and say, "Here, Beacon, have at it," is insulting, really. Here's the truth. The people that are against this here have not been to these meetings. I have. Now, in regards to what we're discussing tonight, I've heard a lot of things. The one thing that has never changed, regardless of the questions that were asked tonight, is, are we able to come back? The answer has always been yes. We are prioritized before everybody else to come back first. Nobody else will be allowed to even set foot on property until we are allowed to come back, if we so choose. Now, I also want to point out that a lot of people don't realize this. In our leasing contract, it states that Salem Housing can ask us to move for any reason whatsoever at our own cost. Any reason. They do not need a reason. They just need to put a roof over our heads. That's all they are legally obligated to do. However, they will be paying for every single expenditure along the way, moving there and moving back, should we so choose. Now, I've heard things about incentiviness. Is this going to cause incentiv... Excuse me. I've lived in Salem for over 40 years. It's been building up everywhere in this city, but this is the first project that will cater to the marginalized and the underutilized people of this town, of this city. I'm sorry, but it's the truth. We are this city, just as much as the rest of this. Prices have only gone up and up and up, and why not add more affordable housing? I do not see anything wrong. And from what I saw from that chart, right now, there is no taxes being paid on this property at all. Even with the tax breaks, taxes will be eventually paid in full. So we're going to be going from zero, the city of Salem will be going from zero. Yes, you will have to pay out of pocket initially, but that money will be given back in, not just by the taxes, but by the people that you're providing homes for. We are not idiots. I am not an idiot. I ask my questions. I've invited people to my meetings. Nobody wants to come. That is not my fault. I have asked questions. I've sent out a newsletter. I try to keep people as up-to-date as possible. So if they are under the misunderstanding of they're not coming back, either they're getting it from outside resources or they're not asking the right questions or to the right people, like me, or the vice president over there, Tom Bowers, or to Kathy Hoag, or to anybody who has made themselves available to ask the questions from which need to have been, you know, asked for this whole thing. And so in regards, I fully respect and understand, you know, not-for-salem people, it's just too much building, too much building. And in a sense, I really do get that, but at the same time, what I do understand is that there's too many of us. I have been disabled since I was four years old. I'm 46 years old. Put that in perspective. And I'll put this else in perspective. I just had to have my hip replaced. Guess where I had to live for a month? Not at home. I had to go to live at a friend's house because my home was deemed unsafe, and my doctors wouldn't let me, wouldn't operate until I had a safe place to go to. It's dangerous for the elderly and disabled. There's no handicap accessibility whatsoever, and let's be frank, the government does not receive enough money to pay for what needs to be done. I've seen the proof that we are sinking, and we will be put on stilts 21 feet above sea level. So no, that is incorrect. That is a blatant lie. They are not, we are, they did project for the incoming flooding over our lifetime, and it is deemed that they will put us at a sufficient enough height where we will not be affected. And if you're going to put that in perspective in regards to the zones, what about the houses around us? Aren't they in the same flooding zone area we are? Why is it just us that's being pointed out in that regard? So I am in favor of this project for more reasons than I can account. I am the youngest person living at Lee Fort Terrace. I'm one of the longest-living people that have lived there, other than a couple of other people, and I believe in this project because I've done my research. I know, I've worked with these people from the very beginning, and I've called them out on their crap, so to speak. We were the ones who got it, not the rest of the people around. No, no, no. The very first meeting with Beacon, I looked at them in the eye and I said, "You are not doing market-rate housing here. It will not be tolerated. We want 100% affordable, and that's it." They didn't even fight us. They gave it to us right away, and here they are in front of you saying that. They're going to hold up that end. And we will be 30% of our income because we all are into that. And I think people are into the misunderstanding of what the 25% apartment units are, and as regards, that's the minimum requirement. That is not what they're just going to give us, and we are guaranteed a spot back. There's no question about that. They've said that. I'm telling you, I'm reiterating that to you, and I'm a perfect person to ask questions. If you want to ask me a question yourself, I am the perfect person asking this.
I really do appreciate testimony. Thank you. Just because I happened to miss it at the start. Could I have your name one more time, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's Shannon. It's Shannon Bailey, and I live at 32 Lee Fort Terrace.
Thank you so much, Shannon.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the right-hand side going around the back? Everyone all set over here? Cindy. And then I promise I will open it up to the people who are in Zoom land.
Cindy Jerslow, 17 Bayview Avenue. I just had a couple of questions. Can you pull up that slide where you're actually rezoning the area? I really didn't get a good look at it.
We can pull it up after when we answer all the questions. If you have a question specific to it.
Yeah, I just had a question. Is it the park or just Bentley School property? And if it is, did any of the abutters, like in Settlers Way, because that would be the residence, or Long Memorial Drive, did any of the abutters get notified of this meeting? And like, you know, you get a letter in the mail when somebody's changing a variance in your neighborhood or your abutter. I don't think anybody's been notified in the neighborhood if you're rezoning that whole area.
Just for clarity, I mean, I'll let them in. There is no, we're not rezoning. All we're defining is a geographic area around the development that defines a boundary and defines the non-residential uses in that boundary.
Well, aren't you doing it from a school to a commercial area? I didn't get that.
And I don't, because according to the state, they identify non-residential uses. Daycares and schools fit into the non-residential category, so that's why it's included.
Okay. I still think that they should have been, because a lot of people didn't even know about this. And this is very refreshing to have an actual in-person meeting. For two years, we've been meeting with Beacon, and it's all been on Zoom, and I've actually, you know, called in a lot on the Zoom meeting, and I was actually kicked off the Zoom meeting and couldn't get on back on. I had to actually FaceTime a friend that was watching, and they said, "Oh, it was just inadvertently, it was done, and it wasn't, it didn't mean to be." But we could not get back. There was a few residents that, you know, we spoke, we didn't, we weren't, you know, saying anything bad or anything, but they kicked us off and we weren't allowed back onto the meeting. So, and I did let City Hall know about it. So this is very refreshing to have an in-person meeting finally, after two years of, you know, going to all these meetings on Zoom, which I think they need to have more of these in-person meetings about this project. Bentley School would be a great place. You could have more people, more of the residents in that area attend. So I'm hoping that you can do this and keep this discussion open after tonight. And also, Beacon Communities, we've asked them, one of our first meetings at our neighborhood meeting, one of our residents asked them, they are a billion-dollar company, and they denied it. She actually, Ms. Kozlowski, she denied that it's an actual billion-dollar company, but it is a billion-dollar company. And it's very sad that the city is selling this to a billion-dollar company that will have to pay no taxes on it. And I would love to get a tax break on my property in Salem. Why can't the residents get a tax break when this billion-dollar company is going to get how many? A million dollars, millions of dollars tax break? So I think you definitely need to listen to the residents on this. Have more meetings. Open it to discussion. Bentley School would be a great place. Have all the residents in that neighborhood come to a meeting that not on Zoom. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else on the right-hand side?
Sure. My name is Pam Broderick. I live at 28 Federal Street, and I just wanted to once again congratulate the committee of the whole for having this opportunity to meet in person. I echo my neighbor's comment about that. It's really important that the city council and every single one of our boards bring back in-person meetings, because the dynamic is really different than Zoom, not to mention technical problems with Zoom that occasionally happen to individuals. But that's not why I'm here. So thank you, Bob, for indulging me. So I am new to this issue. I have not followed it. I wanted to understand what was causing such controversy in my community. And listening tonight, following along here, the TIF itself strikes me as extremely problematic. It looks to me like a solution in search of an application. So it really does look like cart before the horse sort of thing. Others, more erudite than I am, have talked about, you know, how it really doesn't satisfy the requirements of a TIF. You're using the power plant, and you're using a school, and that may be allowed, but it certainly isn't the spirit of the law. If you go down there, it's clearly a residential neighborhood, period. It's not a TIF. It's a residential neighborhood. So I would encourage you all to take that into account with your vote. The floodplain issue is a complicated issue on several lots in Salem, not just this one. But you do have to question, is this a good investment? And that's what this meeting is about. It's about financial tools and about investing in public housing. Is it really a good idea to outsource and privatize our public housing land that we already own? That's my question to you guys when you cast your votes. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else in the room? Seeing none. I have League of Women Voters. I will allow you to talk.
I'm sorry. This is Laura Lee Stewart from Seven Barnes Road. I signed into the wrong account.
That's okay.
I'm not testifying for the League of Women Voters tonight, but I would like to speak in favor of giving a TIF to Beacon Communities for the Lee Fort Terrace redevelopment. Salem desperately needs these affordable units, and I followed the progress of this development since the beginning, and I know that there's been meaningful tenant engagement, and I am aware that the tenants will have a lawyer to help them navigate this process in the final bits of this redevelopment. And Lee Fort Terrace really is in bad shape, but given all of that, it's been a long meeting. I just want to give my support to the council to vote in support of the TIF for Lee Fort Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you. I am looking at the 17 to 10Ds that I currently see, and no one else has raised their hand. If you would like to make a comment, you can utilize the Raise Your Hand button or star nine, if you so choose, if you're calling in. I see no one else. Oh, wait a second. I see one. Sarah, I'm going to unmute you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Libby. I'm at 48 Memorial Drive in Salem. I only moved to this neighborhood in January of this year, and I've really done my best to educate myself on the history of it and how it all came to be. I know this process has been underway for a couple of years. I know this process has been underway for a couple of years now. But it just seems like the communication regarding this project from the city and Beacon Properties has let rumors and fears run wild within this neighborhood. I don't really know where to turn. What I haven't been able to find is the full details and terms of the agreement between Salem Housing Authority and Beacon Properties. If during the answers portion, someone could point to where that is publicly accessible, that would be greatly appreciated and I think help inform the community. Regarding this TIF specifically, it seems huge when you look at the map for the footprint that the actual Lee Fort Terrace takes up. My personal opinion is that if you need to include the school in this zone for it to be considered commercial, your case is extremely thin in the first place. As has been noted by other speakers, this is not a center of commercial activity. And also, other language I've heard tonight, this is the only development project anticipated. There's no other development proposed. That's not guaranteed in this TIF. So, what that can mean for the future of this zone is a little scary. And let's just be frank, Beacon Properties is a for-profit, private company. They are not doing this out of the goodness of their hearts. They're doing it to make money. I can only wonder what the city could do with another $2.9 million in additional tax revenue. I think Beacon is well off enough. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I do not see anyone with their hands up. Sarah, if you could put your hand down, please. Okay. No one else. So, Amanda, did you write all the questions down? I tried to. Tom, you want to come up too, or whoever wants to? I wrote most of them down, I hope. I got them. And then if I missed some, please correct me, or if I missed the intent of what the question was. The first question was something about, it was two questions. It was about job creation and is the agreement to maximize, I believe, profit. I believe it was the words that was used.
Yeah, so I had a chance to answer this for Mayor Harrington on the way out. So, the UCH TIF does not have a job creation requirement. Commercial TIFs do. This is more akin to an H-TIP for its housing, not jobs. And then 40B does have a profit restriction on it and this complies with the profit restriction.
Thank you. Sure. Council Watson-Foel.
Thank you for recognizing me, Chair. Just while we're on the topic, Tom, do you mind talking a little bit more about what that profit restriction is? And is there a number associated with that that we can just reference?
So, I believe it's 10% for rental projects. 10% per year is the profit. But I see Beacon nodding their head.
I'm not sure exactly.
Okay.
But we will have to comply.
Yeah, it's...
Courtney.
Hi, through the Chair, Courtney Kozlow. There are 40, 40B does have restrictions on profit. We've done, used 40B in other cases. We know how to comply with it and we will comply. I can't say offhand exactly, I don't require, recall what 40B.
So, it's safe to say whatever the profit requirement is for 40B is what you'll be adhering to?
Exactly. And it's another one of those highly regulated things that will be part of our legal process.
Nope, that's fair enough. Thank you. Let's see. Vouchers, how long do they last? Who can answer that one?
Sure. So, the type of assistance we're using are called project-based vouchers. So, they stay with the unit. So, if somebody moves, they don't have that mobile Section 8 voucher. They could apply to the Housing Authority for a mobile voucher to live somewhere else. But technically, they move and that voucher still stays at the property. So, we will have a contract with the Salem Housing Authority. They'll actually be providing 108 of the Section 8 project-based vouchers. The remaining 16 will come, we expect, through DHCD, through the application process that we're going through now. And that, but all of the project-based contracts are for 20 years. That's the maximum that HUD will allow. And then, in many cases, we will extend for additional 20 years as that time arises.
And that, the only reason for the 20 years extensions is that's the way they set the program up. They don't set it up beyond 20 years.
Correct.
So, you have to go through that.
Right.
Okay. I think this one's probably for Kathy. Who owns Lee Fort Terrace and why isn't it considered like parkland?
So, the Housing Authority owns Lee Fort Terrace. The Housing Authority is sometimes mistaken for a city entity, but we are, in fact, our own quasi-government agency. We're not considered a state agency or a federal agency. We are considered a quasi-government agency and we are separate from the city. So, the Housing Authority does own the site.
I've had this conversation with many people. When people question me on that, I ask them to go pick up the budget, because nowhere in our city budget, the Housing Authority does not appear in our budget, so.
It's a common misconception. It's understandable, you know, because we do a lot of interacting with the city. The city is our partner, so it's a common misconception. I get it.
And yes, as soon as the residents move into your facility, they become residents of the city of Salem, so.
Exactly.
Okay, let's see.
Sure.
Is it still going to be affordable for the residents moving forward?
May I, through the Chair? So, we didn't spend today talking about all the details of the affordable housing restriction because we're talking about the TIF. And the TIF refers to the affordable housing restrictions. So, I know it's confusing and people are hearing different things and conflating it with something else. So, I just, let me, can I, I want to just clarify a few aspects. Through our ground lease and disposition, all 50 existing, like state public, the public housing units will remain as public housing in perpetuity, where residents will pay no more than 30% of their income and utilities to, of their rent, towards rent. So, that is the base. And then we layer on others. So, we've been talking about whether it's 17 units at 30% AMI or 25 units at 30% AMI. Those are restrictions that the Department of Housing and Community Development will be putting in their restrictions. But on top of that are these project-based vouchers on every single unit. Anybody who makes, for project-based vouchers, 50% of their median income is the maximum per that. So, that layers on top. Everybody making 50% of AMI or less, so that could mean zero, will be able, if they income qualify, they can live there and pay 30% of their income towards rent. So, you know, Shannon kind of alluded to this, that there'll be way more than, we expect, there'll be way more than 25 households earning less than 30% of AMI. It could be 100%. That is unlikely, but it could be. We just have to show to DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, that at least 25 are. But it will be more.
So, that number that was modified from 17 to 25, that is, that is the threshold, that is the floor and that's only in the application so you can qualify for all the other state and federal funding layers on top of everything.
Correct.
So, the only reason it's specified in the agreement, because we understand that you guys, your development team and the Salem Housing Authority has entered into, which isn't part of this tax financing agreement, has entered into memorandum of understanding of what we've been talking about. Those 50 units will remain Salem Housing Authority control in perpetuity.
Well, they'll remain protected.
Protected. There you go. Better word.
As state public housing. If we were to no longer have other...
Right. Because those protections are relative to the fact that the state still funds the program.
Right. And correct. And well, yeah.
Someone spoke to the why we're considering putting the project in the disaster-prone areas. I believe that question was asked and answered during the Conservation Committee meetings. I'll leave it to that. Asked about the trauma of being elderly and can someone speak to that? I mean, I know that we've done a lot of outreach with the residents. Can someone speak to, because it came up in a follow-up question later, what the timeline is potentially, if the agreement is, and what kind of notification the residents will be giving, like they're going to be giving, you know, as of whenever, whatever agreement comes into place, you're going, we're going to have six weeks, eight weeks, 20 weeks, two years, I don't know, whatever. Once all the financing is lined up, what is going to be the notification to the residents and then kind of to alleviate some of those concerns? I mean, trust me, I have an 80-year-old mother and I would, I understand the trauma that would be involved if I told her that she had to move. And she's, because she's very situated in her home and she's very fortunate to be, to own her home and be well enough to maintain it and live there. But if ever came the day that something catastrophic happened, that would be a very difficult conversation. So, I just want to know what kind of outreach we've done to try to, I mean, obviously, that's one of the big traumas in life is moving. And so, how do we, how are we potentially trying to address that? Or how are you? I mean, I know, I realize that it's outside the TIF agreement, but it is paramount to the discussion of, you know, I think that it's been asked so many times, I think we just need to answer it once and for all.
Certainly, yeah. And it's entirely understandable why folks would be concerned with that. We have been as well from the very beginning. In terms of communication, this project did start several years ago and we did manage through a pandemic, so there were some periods of pause. But from the beginning, we started off with meetings in person with, you know, peppers and peppers of memos and in different languages and translated meetings in person. We had opportunities for people to come to the Housing Authority and participate in a large community room that, where we operated the Zoom for people so that it was a more comfortable setting. We have had meetings on-site, outside. The development has unfortunately never had a community space. There is a building that's, that houses a laundry facility and it's always been a garage, actually, so it's never, it's never been a community space. Fortunately, that's one of the things that this project will gain when it is redeveloped. Folks will have an opportunity to have community space that they've never had before, so that's really great. It's obviously really important to us to reach out to people and to communicate with people. And we feel that through, you know, written notifications, through our close work with the local tenants organization, Shannon Bailey and the other members of the organization, they have also helped us in terms of reaching out to people individually, door-to-door. They've gone door-to-door and handed out memos and invited people to meetings. So, you know, I can say with confidence that we have made great extensions of effort to educate folks, to provide folks with information, to give folks opportunity to come meet in person at the Housing Authority, to participate in Zoom at the Housing Authority, to participate in Zoom on their own, if they're comfortable, to meet outside. We've had tents outside. So, you know, we definitely have made quite an extensive effort to outreach to folks and will continue to do so. In terms of the relocation plan, that will be a process that's highly communicated and developed way ahead of time. The Housing Authority and Beacon will be working with a specialized team of people who works just in relocation and helping individuals throughout the entire process of relocating. So, it's a process that has to be extremely organized. We need to give people plenty of time and it, you know, is important that we do so. That is the plan, to give them, you know, plenty of time to plan for this. It wouldn't make sense if we didn't.
So, one of the other follow-up questions to that was in reference to the cost. It came up in one other discussion. So, while I have you here talking about this topic, I'm trying to read all the questions as everyone's speaking to make sure I try to group them together.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense. Thank you. There is no cost to the residents. No cost whatsoever.
And they, that will be part of their, so, you know, as everyone says, the devil's in the details and, you know, always dot the i's and cross the t's. And so, will that be an agreed-upon agreement with the tenants? Or is Beacon's going to speak to that? Courtney?
Hi, through the Chair. It will be agreed upon with the residents through a MOU. In addition, relocation using government-assisted funding is highly regulated through something called the Uniform Relocation Act. So, that is the act that we have to demonstrate we're complying with, that has a requirement that we cover all costs. On top of that, we're paying additional amounts to hire this group, HOU, Housing Opportunities Unlimited, who will work directly with every single resident. They'll have a presence on, you know, on the site in advance of Lee Fort and then wherever people are temporarily relocated, to make sure that their needs are specifically addressed to the best extent possible in the new place that they are. We understand that this is hard and anxiety-provoking and uncertain. And we really are trying hard to find ways to minimize the impact that it has on residents. We also will be hiring a resident service coordinator in advance while people are relocated so that we can keep the community together if people are wanting that and helping to connect them with community services.
Someone alluded to the fact that if, you're obviously going to pay for the move to, for them to leave, to get relocated. Now, is also part of the agreement, if they so choose, because that's a big thing, because someone could move to a different facility and decide that they make new friends, new neighbors, and they have different amenities at the new facility, wherever it may be, and they may decide to stay there. So, they have that option to come back if they so choose. And it is going to be in writing that you are going to pay to relocate them back to the new facility.
Correct.
Because their first refusal to come back?
Correct.
Okay. That's fair enough. Now, I lost my train of thought. Sure, go ahead, Council Watson-Foel, while I find where I was.
Thank you, Chair. I did have a follow-on question just with regards to the relocation. I have heard tonight two things that I, and I just want to make sure everybody is sort of clear on that. The one is that there will still be an application process through the Housing Authority to return. And is that, but that also, or and that also, the 50 tenants have the first, or the 47 tenants have the right of first refusal. So, can you just help me understand what that process looks like? And is that just, is that application really just a record of intent to return that you need documented? It's not that they go back into the cycle and have to be reviewed again and all of that? Thank you.
So, you're correct. It is a process of gathering information. Everyone will qualify. Because they qualify for their existing housing unit, they will qualify for this project. They do not have to go to a waitlist and wait their turn. They will return. They have first right to return. And the application process is such so that we can have information and, you know, begin essentially new files for this new development.
One thing to add as well, this will now, in addition to having the project-based Section 8 vouchers administered by the Housing Authority, it is also going to be a low-income housing tax credit development. So, there are, there's paperwork in the application, you know, is what we'll need to get, to collect from the residents in order to comply with those requirements for our paperwork. So, that is an additional reason for that.
Thank you.
I think the next, there's a whole, there's a bunch of questions that went back to a conversation we had at the start. If we could just readdress that with regards to the, can we pull, Amanda, can you share your screen and pull that back up, the map? It speaks to the zone and the boundaries of the, like, once I, I used a word I didn't want to use, the area, the UCH TIF area. And what, I mean, I know you talked about it earlier with regards to, you identified the boundaries, brought it to the state, asked for their approval, and then I know initially there were some concerns. I actually raised them myself with you, was why the school was included. And then we got back to, and I know it was, it was explained out, but just why that was included. And obviously, some people have alluded to the fact that the soccer field and the baseball field is green space, but it's actually part of the school, so it falls under the school jurisdiction. It's...
Isn't it called Memorial Park?
It's called the park, but it's part, it falls under... It's called a park, but it's part, it's, it falls under the school.
It doesn't stop there.
It does, I don't, plus there's a huge restriction on that property anyway.
Here's the park, it's right there.
The school is included, I will go to the map. Is the, is the baseball field included? If not, we can, we can take it out. I mean, it's on...
If I may, through the chair.
Sure.
The, through the UCH-TIF guidelines, the area needs to be contiguous. So the park is between the school and it was too small per DHCD to not have the school in the area. But clarifying, it is not a rezoning, it is just...
So the, so the area which I'm trying to read on this map is number, it's, I can't even read the number, where the ball field is? That one, yep?
That's a park.
That's a park. Okay, so that is a park, okay. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you just repeat what you just said about DHCD requiring a certain parcel because one was in between the other? I just didn't...
Sure. So the UCH-TIF program is administered by DHCD and DHCD needed to approve the plan for the UCH-TIF prior to us submitting it here. And in those conversations, we initially showed them, here's, here's the area and the different parcels that we can include or not include. And the woman who runs this program instructed us that the school, you needed to have a contiguous zone, you couldn't, it couldn't be, sorry, area, it couldn't be that you have the Lee Fort area a whole and then the school, but we needed the school to be a part, you know, she, she wanted this to be a bigger zone, the school was a part of it. So in order to be contiguous and comply, this was the zone.
Thank you.
And just to, even though this area includes commercial, I just want to remind everyone, this is an affordable housing tool. This isn't, this isn't anything else and right now, the only area that can have affordable housing is Lee Fort Terrace and we just included this in as part of the way to make an area that, that made sense.
Okay. That was a question that was asked. We've spoken to the ability to come back, asked about the zone, time for moving process, spoke to the pro, the ability to come, spoke to the zone and notifications. So Amanda, can we just, so we actually asked, because I know that, I asked a question at some point over the last couple of weeks about the school and we went back and this, they, that was the response, what Courtney just said?
You want to go ahead?
Yeah, correct. And so we, yeah, we asked the question, can we remove the school? It was a back-and-forth conversation, but ultimately DHCD had told us to keep the school in the area.
So it's not atypical in UCHF-TIF zones in other communities that a school, a park or some other parcel, because it all has to be contiguous, so you just can't, you just can't area out one area just because it happens to have some other restriction on it, like a park would?
So the, the school is included because educational use is considered commercial and then you cannot have a non-contiguous zone, area, so you can't have essentially spot arriering it.
So that's why the park?
Correct.
Is included?
Mm-hmm.
Which has its own restrictions because I'd have to look, because at first I thought it was because you have to get, maybe it is through the park department, I have to think about that, where you get permission to use the different field. I wasn't sure if it was through the school or through the parks, but I can look at that, it's not a problem. But I know if it is a park, then it has parkland restrictions. I know there's a SESD easement restriction on it, there's a big pipe that goes underneath it and it's got some other issues with it. So, all right, I was just, that was, that came up in the questions as to why it was like that and, you know, that was the initial question once some people saw it, was why a school was included and it was, the only reason, the only reason, all the other things aside, it's not a residential use. Other than that, I don't like to classify school, daycare as, I understand not residential, that's, but when they say commercial, it just makes it like, I don't consider a school a commercial use or, but it qualifies, it qualifies under the state guidelines, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Someone raised a question about notification. This isn't, this, I would assume, because this isn't a, this isn't a zoning or it isn't someone asking for a special permit or this is because this is an area, a area as defined early, in the beginning of the meeting, the notification is in the paper, which, that's a discussion for another day, why that we still make notifications via newsprint, no offense to my newsprint people, but not, I only know a handful of people that actually read those postings and I happen to be one of them, but not too many actually read them. But is, is that the qualifications for this?
That is correct. The requirement is the newspaper notification.
Okay. Did I miss any? Tom or Amanda, were you guys jotting down questions? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question that I heard, which I think, I think will be quickly clarified, but I heard a question asking whether the creation of the UCH-TIF area was going to have any future impact on AMI calculations. I think it's another one of these questions that kind of springs from maybe some confusion about exactly what levels of regulation we're talking about, so if you wanted to just speak to that quickly.
I don't, I don't think I followed the question. Could you say that differently?
One of, one of our prior commenters, I think it was our commenter who was here from the Mildred Haley Properties and JP, asked whether the creation of the zone was going to have an impact on the way that the AMI calculations were then sorted out because it was going to bring other houses nearby and other properties nearby into the zone. So I think it's just worth clarifying.
It has, has no impact whatsoever. The AMI is calculated based on the census tract area that is part of the project-based voucher regulations has, designates which census tract to use and that's what will be here. It's not impacted in any way by the TIF.
Thank you.
I think that was for questions that we got from the public. While I'm here, I will ask one, because Steve's over there in the corner and we have no one...
Can you take my question? I asked a financing partner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who was, who was the financing partner? I'm sorry, just so, I think you said it, but I...
We haven't chosen our, I'm not sure which financing, we don't have, we don't know, we haven't selected a tax credit investor or lender at this point.
So you, okay.
Yeah.
At this point, you don't have one?
Correct.
That's the answer? Thank you. Sorry I missed that, sir. I was going through, I was trying to group all the questions together. Was there any other question that someone asked that I missed?
Yeah, I requested all of you people taking a drive-by to Lee Fort Terrace.
The, the, I mean...
And see the common area that isn't a common area? And see all the no parking signs and how they use it in the office? They should be in a common area, so it won't have the chasm between different residents where we can all get together and see how we, off right and aboveboard facts is why you don't have trust, because it's always obligation and lack of truth.
Okay.
And that's the problem, isn't it?
Thank you.
We're not going to run into World War II crap, are we?
Thank you.
We're going to crush everybody.
Thank you. Steve, if I could, didn't want to leave you, didn't want to leave you over there all night. I have one question, when I initially saw the spreadsheet with regards to the agreement, could you explain how we came up with a $41,000 baseline that's contiguous across the 15 years of the agreement? And how we came up with that?
Yep. Steven Cortez, I'm the Director of Assessing. Before I answer that, I should probably go over what the Assessing Department does.
Sure. I'm sure we're going to hear that tomorrow night, too.
We're going to hear that tomorrow, yeah, exactly. So this is just a fresher for that. I would like to start by explaining some of the duties the Assessing Department is tasked with throughout the year. The Assessing Department attempts to conduct inspections on every property in the city on a DOR-mandated nine-to-10-year basis. Within that amount of time, things can change or grow depending on maintenance or depreciation. We also gather vast data through our sales verification process, which we attempt to collect on every sale in the city. Another means of gathering pertinent data for the assessment purposes is with the income and expense forms, which we send out annually to all income-producing properties and any residential property with four or more units. All of this sensitive information is not considered public record pursuant to Master and Law Chapter 69, Section 38D. This collective of information is used in our analysis module to determine whether we raise or lower values reflective of the market during a snapshot of time. The data is extrapolated, sorted and compared to like properties to establish a uniform and equitable guideline throughout the city. For example, we do not use sales of single-family houses as a guide for valuing apartment buildings or we do not use income from commercial properties to assist in valuing residential property. The income collected for affordable housing properties and expenses needed to operate them is very different from non-affordable housing properties. Lee Fort Terrace in particular collects well below market rent. The qualified tenants are also below state area median income level. When utilizing an income approach to value, we look at both the rent and the expenses along with the subsidy. When utilizing the cost approach, we look at the age of the building and the quality of construction and if there's been any change. Lee Fort Terrace is an old, tired property made up of one-bedroom units with no significant change to the parcel. The market trend for the collection year dictate what the values would be. That's pretty much how we came up with the value.
So you, if, if I may, so you evaluated it on its current conditions and what?
Current conditions, the rent.
The rent and it's not, it's not, it's not applicable or comparable to single-family homes?
Correct.
So there was some sort of formula that state guidelines gave you someplace in some little chart with a wheel and whatever, however you guys do it.
All of the above.
All of the above, okay. I was just curious how that, where that number came from. With regards to the terms, it's, came up in a series of questions and emails over the last couple of weeks when we first, first came in. Why, and I don't know if it's directly towards you or, so when we look at the evaluations and the evaluations of the property affected by the fact that 50 of the units are now restricted to Salem Housing Authority, so would that in turn make the value of the property moving forward less? Or is it still based on the value because it's, would be 100% affordable?
No, it's based on the income.
It's based on the incomes, okay. Because, oh, because it's affordable, okay. All right. So it's based on the number of units, size of the units and what the, and what, whatever, because they, being Beacon, has to go in front of the state to ask them for what their approval are for whatever rents they set?
Correct.
Okay. I was just curious where the numbers are coming from, that's all. Could I have somebody explain? Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to sit there all by yourself and I was a question I meant to ask a long time ago. With regards to, this is the first time I've ever seen a UCH-TIF and I know Amanda and I have talked about this and we have given TIFs for various things over the years and it's always been, usually as Mayor Harrington alluded to, sometimes they're about job creations. I look at some of the TIFs we gave out on Swambskett Road for some of the businesses out there because they, they were making an investment in the community, they're also providing jobs. Most recently Tropical Products, on their move, we gave them a TIF because of the investment in a new facility. Typically, it's not, one of the things that got me was the period of this agreement. Typically, those agreements are usually from five to 10, usually. This one happens to be 15 and I heard through discussions that it could have gone all the way up to 20. So I guess it's, we came to this landing spot of 15 years because it makes the numbers work, but I think it's also important for us to, maybe to talk about is, when you get into these TIF agreements, it's because in the case of businesses, they're making a big investment in our community with regards to buildings, infrastructure, structure and they're also creating jobs. This specific TIF is for the fact that we're going to create a housing development that is 100% affordable. So being the fact it's 100% affordable and based on 50% AMI and this is a conversation that we in this council have been having for years relative to affordability because the state wants to say affordable is 80% and below. And we all know 80% because the AMI for Salem is, also calculates in Boston, 80% doesn't work. We've all, that's why anything now we move forward through is at a minimum of 60. And so, you know, this project is, fits into that criteria where we're going, trying to be. Can someone just explain the importance of the length of the agreement? I think Courtney touched on it earlier, the length of the agreement and its ability, it's more, the TIF is more of a commitment from the city because of the 40B application to show that we are, we, we would like the project because of its affordability, because as was stated by, was Sharon earlier?
Sharon.
Thank you. That the, I mean, no one wanted market rate. And so when we went to totally affordable, that put us into a different category and those categories, in order to apply for all those multiple layers of other funding, requires that we adopt this area and then conversely, this agreement. But can we talk about the terms and why 15 years and, I mean...
Sure, through the chair.
Yeah.
So low-income housing tax credits, which is the primary, we get to, get that from the Department of Housing and Community Development and we convert it into equity through investment partners. That is the bulk of the funds that we get. They're required to have oversight for 15 years. They get their tax credits over 10 years, they have oversight over 15. And in order to get their buy-in, that this is a viable project, they need to see an operating pro forma, an operating budget. They want to see originally for 20 years, but for the 15 years that is stable. So if we had a cliff where suddenly we went from not, not paying much taxes to a lot, that won't be seen favorably by the tax credit investors. Will also likely impact our, the amount that we get from them for the tax credits, it's how we raise the equity, there's a dollar, an amount that pegged to each tax credit. A little confusing there, but, so the 15-year term is really key to affordable housing. I also want to point out that while the TIF, you know, will be paying over that 15 years $2.7 million in estimate and getting two point, around 2.9 that we will not have to pay, that actually helps us leverage additional debt of about $3.9 million. So by, by getting, by, we're still paying taxes, the city, you know, cuts back a little less, you're allowing us to make this project happen and investing in it, which is what DHCD wants to see to make us more competitive. So it's...
Thank you. As I was just sitting here trying to wrap up things in my head, one of the questions that came through, one of the letters that was submitted to us, was the project has ballooned from 69 million to 79? I don't know where those numbers come from, are those, I mean, can you speak to that?
Sure. I believe the 69 may have been an initial estimate of what we believed and in that letter, it said two years ago, the cost to be. And we are constantly getting real-time estimates as we develop our plans. That was based on a very schematic design and now we are doing a lot to make this passive house, all-electric and to be well above, well, well above the predicted 2070 flip point, well above, all of that cost money and as that gets actually cost estimated with plans that are further along, as has happened over the two years, that's a significant driver of the costs. The other is utility costs and as an all-electric building, the spikes that we've seen recently will have an impact as well as just having a better sense of what the project will be as time goes on. A very long zoning board process, CONCOM also, you know, adds to all of the bills.
I'm going to entertain one question from Zoom land, it's Richard Stafford. And for the record, I already read his letter into the record and so if you have something additional to add, other than that was in your record, I am going to allow you to talk. You can, Richard, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, Bob, thank you, actually. This is Parla Pegaro at 30 Boardman Street, Rich Stafford's wife. I did have a question, thanks for taking my, my question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, because I think, I don't know whether this is something to sort of take a look at with... take a look at with regard to this TIF. I'm wondering, although this project is all affordable, will, will Beacon still be getting, even though it's affordable and folks are going to be paying based on income, will Beacon still be getting market rate, given all of the different funding sources that they are going to be tapping into? Will they ultimately, like, for example, if I have an apartment at 30% of my income, will that apartment actually afford them? Will they still get a difference to cover what I pay and bring it up to market rate? That's what I want to know, because I think that if, if that is the case, and we're thinking that all of this is affordable, and we're basing our understanding of this TIF on making it work for them, I think that there are lots of different ways of looking at what the numbers really mean. So I, I'd like to know, I don't know if I asked the question very articulately, I'm sorry.
No, it was perfect.
Yeah, but, but that's what I'd like to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I mean, Kathy, I know you and, Kathy and I have, for the record, have had numerous phone conversations over the last couple of weeks with regards, once this agreement came out, and there was a bunch of series of questions about it, and this is one of the questions that I asked, and I don't understand all the layers to it, because as has been described in how things, how it transpires, but one of the questions I did ask was how we set the rents. Obviously, that has, I'll let you speak to it, but it gets approved by the state, it's, and I'll let you speak to the process, and what, how that was working, what the voucher is, but the residents still only pay 30% of their, whatever their income determination is, is that correct?
Yes.
If you could, please.
So I, I think the question is referring to the housing assistance payment, that's part of the voucher program. And the housing assistance payment is based on the area, the expected, you know, area, what's, what's the term called?
Fair market.
Yes, thank you. It's, it's really late, I'm getting a little tired. The fair market rents, which are determined by HUD. So annually, HUD puts out statements for what is considered fair market rent per area. Salem is in the Boston-Cambridge metro area, so the fair market rents are sort of lumped into, you know, certain areas. And the Housing Authority develops payment standards based on a percentage of those FMRs. So typically, it varies anywhere from, you know, 80 to over 100% of the FMR, depending on what the FMR is that particular year. For example, this year, the Housing Authority has adopted 100% of fair market rents. So the resident would pay 30% of their income, the payment standard is set, and the remainder is a housing assistance payment paid for by the federal government, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any members of the council? Councilor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair McCarthy, not being a member of the committee. I'll be more expansive tomorrow when I have an opportunity to vote. But I do want to mention a couple of things regarding the resiliency and sustainability of this project. Prior to becoming a counselor, I invited Beacon and the Housing Authority to present their proposals to the Sustainability, Energy, and Resiliency Committee, and they came back a second time. And as a committee, we unanimously agreed that the project exceeded any of our initial expectations. Courtney mentioned some of these. It's an all-electric development with solar PV to power most of it, passive house design, which is about as good as it gets, especially for a nonprofit. Even the parking, as Shannon mentioned, will be above the 2070 floodplain. But when you factor in costs, something that hasn't come up, that I think is really important, is that this development will be universal design, and will be used and will be accessible for all abilities, including those with mobility and sensory impairments. And we don't have hardly any properties in Salem that are universal design, and that's part of the Salem for All Ages Initiative. Also wanted to mention, very important, it's come up a few times, that these units, the, there's a contract for all the units to be PBVs, and that's really important, so it sticks with the unit. The last thing is something that Shannon actually brought up. Currently, there's no taxes paid on this property, and the city doesn't realize any monies, but will realize, I know it's over an extended period, but $2.4 million. And so I will be, you know, when it's before the full council, I will be supporting the, the area and the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Prozinski?
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. I'm not sure whether or not my question is actually completely in line with the TIF, but seeing that we're talking about a, a tax incentive that we're going to be voting on tomorrow, I just wanted to go into the area of, of the design of the project, and I know I've spoken to other counselors over here, and probably some other members of the public who are in here. I'll give you my opinion, and what I think people were agreeing with me, that the design of this project is not attractive. It's boxy, it's socialistic style, it doesn't fit the area, it doesn't fit the community, it doesn't fit Salem or the culture. We in this city have a McIntyre district that represents old Salem, we have colonial houses that represent old Salem, we have seaside buildings that represent a seaside community, very New England-ish. But this project just stands out as something that's very unusual, and just doesn't seem to fit the landscape of what's, what the rest of the community expects. I've seen the other projects that Beacon has done, and my hat's off, because some of those projects look very nice. They, they look totally different than what's being built in Salem, but they look like they were built with the other communities in mind, and the culture of those communities. So I know that the neighborhood is going to have to live with this if it's built, and they're going to have to look at it every day, and all the abuddhas are going to have to look at it every day. And I just think that they would rather look at something that fits Salem, not something that looks like it was just built cheaply and hastily. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor McClure?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a, excuse me, a late-breaking question that just occurred to me, which can be directed to planning or, or to our representatives from Beacon, which is, are there any, are there any sort of looming timelines that you'd like us to be aware of? Are there any restrictions in terms of, you know, this application has to be submitted by such and such date, anything along those lines that you want us to take into consideration?
Courtney?
Thank you, yes, there is. In mid-January, we have our biggest application due to the Department of Housing and Community Development for the majority of our funding. And having this in place now and approved prior to that is, makes the competitiveness of our application much stronger. So that's what we're aiming for.
Yosa, Councilor?
Yes, I, I think so.
Okay.
I guess I'll just add the comment that I think, I think, I think we've heard some pretty clear confusion in some of the commentary we've heard tonight, more than anything else about, than differing opinions. I think what we've just heard from a lot of people is that there just seems to be a lack of clarity around what exactly is going on with this particular piece of the proposal, but with some other parts of it as well. And it is a really complex, a really complex proposal, but I do think there is something to the comments where people sort of requested an ability to have a better sense of sort of what is contained in the MOU between SHA and Beacon, so they could have a better sense of what was sort of going to appear by force within the final AHR, so that they had a real strong understanding of all the affordability requirements. I think that's, I think that's a fair point of confusion, and I do think it would have been helpful in retrospect to maybe have a little bit of a cut sheet kind of explaining, you know, the different unit designations, and kind of, you know, their regulatory purpose, and, and what it means for residents versus what it means for state agencies, and I, I think all of that would have helped to generate a little more confidence. I'm not quite sure where I land on this right now.
Councilor Watson-Fell?
I'd like to just make a supportive comment, that I am feeling very similar to the Board for Counselor. Just for what it's worth, I want, didn't want him swimming out there alone.
Fair enough. Councilor Merkel?
Thank you.
Being a member of the committee, just for the clarity of anyone, the councils are speaking now, members of the committee.
Yes, thank you, Chair McCarthy. Speaking as a member of the committee, I first want to express my appreciation for all the information that was given tonight, the presentations, the comments, everyone that came and give, gave a great deal of their time. And I actually feel that the, the questions were answered very, very clearly and thoroughly. And I also just want to reiterate Counselor Cohen's comments on, you know, there's a lot about this that's really solid. We need affordable housing, we have a crisis, we don't have a lot of time to wait to create more affordable housing in, in general. And I appreciated a lot of the comments, speaking about how these will be ADA compliant, and the care that's been taken, and will be taken into the, the planning and the process for the tenants, because it's ultimately about them. And I am in support, I think we've gotten a lot of clarity too, on the TIF, the reasons for it, how it's going to assist in getting the funding that's needed for this project. As we all know, the government's not creating affordable housing partnerships with, with private, you know, with the private sector is, is a path forward to creating affordable housing. And they explained the need for it to pencil out with the, with the ability to have some assistance when they apply for, for other funds that they need to make this a reality. So I, I want to state, support, and, and my thanks for, for the presentation, all the information we've gotten ahead of time at, at the previous meetings, and tonight particularly. Thank you.
Before I ask for a motion, I guess, my one last question, Amanda or Tom, could you speak to the status of the project? I mean, where, I mean, it's my understanding that they, they, has it gone through the appeal period process? So they are fully permitted through all the regulatory bodies, other than this TIF agreement? Is that correct?
October 24th, they were issued the permit by the zoning board.
No, I realize that, but there's also an appeal period, I just, I just want to make sure where, so this is, this is the last piece to the puzzle, so to speak, or whatever you want to determine, I hate to use those words, but it's getting late.
The zoning board of appeals decision has passed the appeal period.
And so they, they went through all the other channels, all the other city agencies with regards to conservation, zoning, and everything that they, they, what's their status, I guess?
I'm checking on the Conservation Commission's status.
Yeah, I'm just, just curious. Because we're sitting here talking tonight about financing, and obviously, the rest of the, the rest of the details of the project have been addressed during various other board meetings with the other groups, so I just want to make sure that we understand where we are.
The ZBA process is completed and it's passed the appeal period, the CONCOM process ended, I forget the date, but it still has, I think, a few more days before that appeal window closes, closes, I don't know the date, sometime next week.
Okay. Fair enough. Anyone else? Okay, it's five minutes after nine, if the big clock is right, is it right? Look at that, it's right.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, sorry, Councilor Hepworth, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, real briefly, I just wanted to express my, my thank you, my thanks and my support for, for this, this TIF here. I mean, if you think about what we, the amount of conversation we had around affordable accessory dwelling units, resulting in six affordable accessory dwelling units, this is, this is upgrading 50 current affordable units and adding an additional, I think, 74 to the mix. These conversations aren't easy, I can understand the confusion, I had a lot of confusion around this, just as far as what, net-net, what does this end up with? This ends up with, you know, 124 affordable, much-needed affordable units, in a spot where, you know, something has to happen at Lee Fort Terrace, and it's, it's, it's not, there's no easy solution, there's no easy answer here, but I think this is, this is, this is what we ask for, and we ask for new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, if you can make it brief, I'll entertain one last comment, we already had one...
You didn't answer the question about, it's connecting that commercial that Matt, that Amanda showed, it doesn't connect, you have four maps right across the connection, if it has to connect for that, that whole zone or area, it does not connect, and you never answered the question whether if that's parkland and it's protected, that you have all zoned out. You keep avoiding that, you're our councilor, you have not yet addressed that. That's your board, you should know that.
Thank you. Amanda, if you could come back up, in, according to the UCH TIF zone that appeared in the documents, it does call out, it does call out the parcel as the, the school, which is the park, which is parkland. I was in error, I, I thought it was part of the school, but it is part of the parkland. And the question was asked prior of why, why we included that in there, because zones in other areas, other communities, which are broad, more broad-based than this one, it was because you couldn't skip out that area with the getting over to include the school. Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I think there was a question about crossing the street.
Yes, as you go from the map, you look at it, there's the area to the one side of Ford Avenue, and then it goes down to, basically, it looks like a crosswalk or a driveway, whatever that, the size of a crosswalk or driveway that connects across Ford Avenue to pick up the, the power plant property and the adjacent property. So, so could you, and the question has been raised, that it is not contiguous, was that, was that brought to the state before we got, before the, in the approval process for this area?
Yeah, the proposed area is considered contiguous, those rights aways, those right-of-ways don't negate it being contiguous. So you can cross a street and still be a contiguous parcel.
So, so from the one par, I don't have the map in front of me, it's in, it's in the park, it's up there somewhere, which is, but, so your answer to the question that's been raised, is that in the state's opinion, when they, when they looked at the zone, or the, once again, let me correct myself, they looked at the area, the area on one side of Ford Avenue, and the little area that connects Ford Avenue to the other side of Ford Avenue, they consider that contiguous, even though it's just connected by the width of a street?
Correct.
That's correct, thank you.
And parkland?
Chair, as I understand it, the second question was with regards to protections of the parkland of Memorial Park.
So the second question was the question of parkland, and I know that parkland has its own protections, which, with regards to declaring its surplus and whatnot, is, is a whole process involved with itself, which requires unanimous vote of the Park and Rec Department, two-thirds of the city council signed by the mayor, off to the state, where it goes through the State House, and then it has to go through the Senate, and then it would come back, and part of the caveat is there that if you, if you were to entertain that sale, then you have to replace the parkland with another piece of parkland of equal size.
Yes, of equal, that's all correct, and it would be, have to be replaced with another property that's of equal or greater size and value, so it's not just any parcel, it would have to be a parcel that has equal value.
That's correct. So that's, that's...
Does it take a common net? Does it take a, you've taken Memorial Park years ago, is it common nets?
I've been, I've been polite. We're, we're...
Well, you're not answering the question, Paul.
We, we... We, we did answer the question, and the comment, the comment period, we allowed you to ask the questions, and we asked the questions, and you asked the question again, and we just answered it. The Memorial Park is not part of the school. I was in error when I first spoke that. It has been identified as park, and under park, it has its own protections. And as was stated by Amanda, that the park was included in the area, and it's included in the area because it allows the other properties to be contiguous. You cannot just eliminate a parcel because it has some other restriction on it. In this case, this restriction would be that it is parkland, which has its own restrictions, which then the, which would not be, which would be, has its own hurdles to make it developable. But it is located adjacent to the property, so it has been included. Is that fair?
Correct.
Anyone else? Counselor Watson felt.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow on to the question you asked earlier, just with regards to where the project is at in its sort of ZBA and boards and commissions review, to speak to Counselor Presniewski's comment, can we, or could you just let us know where, I'm sorry, I'm so tired, where the project is at with regards to design review and planning board review and all of that, what, if anything else still needs to happen with regards to the design? Thank you.
Sure. So the, the project went through a comprehensive permit, and that means that all local permitting, local permitting goes through the zoning board of appeals. So it didn't go through zoning, it didn't go through the planning board. What the zoning board did is invite the planning board to their meeting to offer comments because the zoning board doesn't usually look at site plan review, and the comprehensive permit is akin to a site plan review. So they got that feedback initially. The Conservation Commission, you know, issues essentially state permits, and so that's why that is another process that has to happen at the city. But locally, in terms of our other review boards, that's all funneled through that zoning board of appeals decision, and that's complete.
Anyone else? So there's two matters in front of us tonight. We have matter number 656, which is the UCH TIF area, and we have matter number 657, which is the UCH TIF agreement as amended. I will entertain a motion, or motions. Motions would be to refer to the full council with any kind of recommendation or the matter remain in committee. At this point, I guess, this is atypical of, because it's a city, it's a, I mean, it's listed as a public hearing, but if it, but it's not technic, well, it is a public hearing relative to the comments, but it's not a, it's not like a zoning board meeting. So that would be an interesting question. Because if it is a public.
We can still take comments tomorrow night.
We can still take comments tomorrow night, but if the, if the matter were to remain in committee, then it would have to be, because it would be, I'm just speaking aloud, I apologize, I would believe it would have to be referred to a date certain, only because it would be, because it's, because it's.
Refer to what?
A date certain. A public, when you, when you continue a public hearing on a matter, it would, because it was advertised twice in the newspaper, which is a discussion for another day, in order for you to continue that, you'd have to continue to date certain. Am I correct with that? Tom? I believe so. I mean, because I'm not, I'm not a, I mean, I've been through enough of the zoning stuff that it's, in order to keep a public hearing open, it would have to be to date certain. And the date certain would, I mean, in order for the, for what agreement you're looking for would have to be sometime, if that was the, I'm, I'm, no one's made a motion, so I can't.
First of January.
Sometime in January, early January. Is that correct?
I think December, early January.
Okay.
You need some, you need some notification.
No, no, I don't think you need, I don't think you need two weeks notice, maybe you would you have to renotice it if the public hearing was extended? I'll, I'll raise that with Amanda, I'm sorry.
If you continue the public hearing to a date certain, then you do not need to do a new notification.
So if we couldn't come up with a date certain, right, if, if that was the will, I, once again, I can't make motions because I'm the chair. If that was the will, then we'd have to pick a date certain sometime in early January in order for that to transpire. That would be difficult. Counselor Merkel, being a member of the committee.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy. With the additional, with only our committee voting tonight, I would like to motion that we move this out of committee to the full council with no recommendation in order to give everyone the opportunity to vote tomorrow. Thank you.
So Counselor Merkel's motion is to refer the matter number 656 to the, to the full council tomorrow with no recommendation. Is there a second? Seeing none, I'll entertain another motion. And once again, the motion, the options would be no recommendation, recommend, recommend to the full council, or continue to a date certain. So it would be if someone wants to start taking out their phones and figuring out what date works in January, if that's Counselor Cohen.
Counselor Hapworth.
Counselor Hapworth. Do you have a counter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm comfortable with this and happy, and happy to send this with a positive recommendation to the council. If my, if my colleagues are uncomfortable with this and want to see this continue forward, I'm happy to support that as well. I just, and I know a motion needs to be made here, so I, I'd make a motion to send this with a positive recommendation, but put it under a discussion if folks have reservations, if they want to make their own motion, I'm, I'm happy to, to vote in support of that too, if there's unanswered questions or there's things that folks are uncomfortable with.
Thank you, Counselor. So I guess my question is through, through me to, to the, I mean, when you look at January, I'm going to look at my, the council president, the first meeting in January is on the 12th?
Fourth.
No, well, no, rework doesn't count. I'm just saying, it doesn't count. Huh? The 12th? So that we'd be looking at some, so if we were, if we were looking to continue this, it would have to be the 9th, 10th, or 11th. Is that correct? I mean, it's, it's well over a month out, so it's kind of hard to say what people's schedule is going to look like. Yes, theoretically, it could be the 5th. And that would still get it on the, if, whatever the action was at that point, it would still get it on the agenda for the 12th, and then it would still get it out before the 15th. Does that, does that work for you guys? I know that you're under a timeframe.
If I could clarify what you're suggesting, there'd be another committee meeting?
There'd be another committee, the, the public hearing would be continued so that people, other people, if they've had additional questions other than the questions they've already raised, or other members of the public want to raise a question, if they, if some, it's not so people can just come up and ask the same question again. So it's, so if other people want to weigh in, or if they have a different question.
Right.
And then it would be, a committee meeting would be sometime either on the January 5th, 9th, 10th, or 11th with a full council meeting on the 12th.
That would be the latest, that would work.
That would, that's cutting it right to the, okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. So with that being said, is there a motion? Counselor McClain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to try to be as clear as I can. I am going to make a motion to continue this to the date certain of January 5th, and, excuse me, and I'm going to be really clear about the information that I would hope to see so that we can resolve the conversation. I referenced it earlier. I am really hoping, if possible, to see the, at least the MOU or some version of the MOU that clarifies what the agreement is between the SHA and Beacon so that people have a real strong understanding of what is going to ultimately end up in the AHR, and they know this is the agreement that's been made, this is what's going to be worked out, this is what's going to be generated, because as the, as the documentation tonight makes clear, that's not going to be generated until after we pass this. And then the other thing that I would really like to see is that sort of cut sheet that I mentioned earlier, which gives us a really clear list of the different unit designations that we've talked about, and by that I mean some of the debate we've heard about 17 versus 25 units, people returning to the 50 units, how many units are eligible for project-based vouchers, right? So I'd like to see those laid out really clearly, and then I'd like to see it laid out what it means in terms of what their regulatory basis is, right, what their impact is in terms of, this is a category that means this will be deed restricted and it will serve residents. This is a category that goes on to an application for a regulatory agency, and so we can arrive at funding, right? I want it to be really clear what each of those unit designations depends to so that people understand what level we're talking about. And also, I'd really like to see what the expiry is for all of those, right? Some of those are going to be a 99-year lease, some of those are going to be in perpetuity, project-based vouchers might need an extension in 20 years. Having that really clearly laid out so that we can clear up some of the confusion that we've heard at the hearing tonight is also the information I'm asking for. So just to be really clear about why I'm continuing this, why I'm making a motion to continue this and what I'm looking for, but I am making the motion to continue this to a date certain, January 5th, 2023.
6 o'clock?
6:00 PM.
Co-posted?
Co-posted with the committee of the whole, and it would be great to have those documents at least, let's see, that's the 5th, so let's say January 3rd.
January 3rd?
How about December 25th?
December 25th.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
As early as possible.
December 28th. As early as possible.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor by Counselor McClain to keep the public hearing on this matter open to date of January 5th at 6:00 PM?
I would second that.
Seceded by Counselor Watson felt, under discussion.
Does it make sense to bring a refresher, like one sheet spec on the plans for the building with regards to related services and expenses? I think there's some misunderstanding around the cost of this project, that not, not to build, the cost of the project, but the cost of running the facility on, for the next, you know, number of years.
I would think that an FAQ sheet, a fact sheet, would be helpful if circulated so we can get the information out there, but I would caution everyone that the agreement in front of us is the TIF agreement and the zone. So specific questions with regards to the zone. I know that it's all, the TIF agreement is layered into the affordability aspect and the vouchers and all the other layers we've talked about and the costs, and I understand that. So I think that that is, I think the F, I think Amanda, what you put in the beginning of the meeting, I think just if we could expand on that a little bit and make it more clearly defined exactly what is, what is anticipated to relieve some of the questions. And then if we could also, once again, because it's come up a couple times about the area, I don't like to use the word zone because everyone, as soon as I say zone, everyone thinks we're rezoning something. We're not rezoning anything. It's an area around the development that identifies the parcels in the area that are non, that are non-residential. So can we also ask them about, because there's been a question raised about the continuity between the two parcels and using just basically, it looks like about the size of a crosswalk across Ford Avenue in order to get to the other side of Ford Avenue? So if we could just address that as well, somehow, to make sure, if we could just ask, because I'm assuming once we presented the plan or the area, that somebody at the state reviewed the plan and came up with everything we've talked about tonight, just because we could, we just sent it back and say, listen, there's a bunch of questions from the public with regards to the continuity, because it's supposed to be contiguous, of the plan relative to the one area on one side of Ford Avenue and the other area on the other side of Ford Avenue without really picking up any parcels between the two, other than the fact that it's a street.
Right. So, so is it to reaffirm what we have stated today in writing?
That would be great.
Okay.
That would be, yeah, if, if the, if someone at the department who approves these things could actually put it in writing, that it's acceptable in the state's level in how they interpret and perceive these UCH zones, areas. I hate that, use that word. I don't like to use that word. Anyway. All right? So that's what, okay? Thank you. Anyone else? There's a motion on the floor on number, Council Order Number 656 with regards to the UCH TIF area. Motion by Counselor McClain to refer the matter to, refer the public hearing to a date certain of January 5th at 6:00 PM, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. I'll call the roll. Counselor Hapworth.
Yes.
Counselor McClain.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes, the matter, on the matter of Council Order Number 656, the UCH TIF area, we have five members of the committee voting, five affirmative, zero and a negative. The matter is continued to January 5th at 6:00 PM. On the matter of Council Order Number 657, which is the UCH TIF zone as amended, counsel, as we can remember back from a few hours ago, Counselor McClain introduced an order, a correction to the agreement that changed the word may to shall, and that was, that was voted on earlier. So the question in front of us right now is the matter of moving Number 657 to a date certain, public hearing kept open to a date certain of January 5th at 6:00 PM. Moved by Counselor McClain, seconded by Counselor Watson felt. I'll call the roll. Counselor Hapworth.
Yes.
Counselor McClain.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. I'll entertain one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Watson felt moves to adjourn. All those in favor? Oh, wait a second, I have to do it, I'm, sorry. Row call, sorry. Counselor Hapworth.
Yes.
Counselor McClain.
Yes.
Counselor Merkel.
Yes.
Counselor Watson felt.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. We stand adjourned at 9:27.